Mike's giving you the go-ahead.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, welcome to the city council meeting on July 19th. We are opening the meeting at three minutes after seven. Pursuant, we do have a quorum. We are going to take a short recess and convene into executive session pursuant to section 551.087, Texas Local Government Code, to discuss or deliberate proposed economic development incentives for a business prospect that the governmental body seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the territory of the governmental body and with which the governmental body is conducting economic development negotiations. Time is four minutes after. Welcome to the city of Leander, regular council meeting. Today is July 19th. The time is 7:13. Welcome. At this time, we will accept the colors. And now the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas pledge.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. Tonight's invocation will be given by Billy...
No Billy. By my dad, Mr. Joe Erby Gleaton.
Joe Erby.
Come up here. Yes.
Will you pray with me? Heavenly Father, we're thankful for this day and for the many blessings you give us every day of our lives. We're especially thankful, Father, for those civic-minded citizens who use their free time and sometimes their family time to help make Leander a better place to live. We're thankful, Father, for all of those who want to be a good American citizen. Father, we're... We know that the summertime is a hot time, but we pray, Father, that if it be your will, you would cause that the life-giving and life-sustaining rain to come to this area, not only here, but the entire state and those other states where those brave firemen are battling the blazes. We know, Father, that some of those people have lost their homes, their means of making a living. We pray, Father, that you would consider giving us the rain. We're thankful, Father, for everything that you do for us every day. Help us to live a life that's pleasing to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, we will have staff comments. Okay. Excuse me? Oh, Ms. County Chief, can you call the roll?
Councilmember Andrea Navarrete.
Present.
Mayor Protem Michelle Stevenson. Councilmember Shannon Shepherd.
Here.
Councilmember Christine Settequist.
Here.
Councilmember Jeff Siller.
Here.
Councilmember Marcy Cannon.
Here.
Mayor Troy Hill.
Here. At this time, we do have a quorum. We are open for business. Next, we're going to do recognitions, proclamations, and visitors. Do we have any?
No, sir.
No? Okay. Okay, now we go to citizens' comments. Would anybody like to speak about an item that is not on the agenda tonight? Okay, Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Hill. Yes, I would like to... This'll be a get-to-know-the-person because for several months now, you're going to learn more. And his name is Horace Hamilton. Horace is 94 years old. He graduated from Leander High School in 1941. At the age of 16, a month later, he was 17, and his mother signed because he was determined to join the Navy, whereupon he did join the Navy. And after a few weeks of training at San Diego, they came into the classroom and announced that they were empty in the classrooms. They were to board a ship and they were going to the Pacific. And so he did, got on his first ship, and they had some duties to perform, and then they headed to Pearl Harbor. And five days later, Japan bombed Pearl Harbor. So he was just barely 17, had never been away from Texas, Leander, and all of a sudden, he was on the USS Phoenix. They were not sunk, and they helped save other people. They spent harrowing several months, and he was in the Navy for four and a half years. And I asked Horace recently... Mitch Fuller and I went down to visit him if he would come to Leander in November for Veterans' Day and we could honor him as one of the few remaining Pearl Harbor survivors. He has a list of awards and ribbons a mile long. Mitch knows more about that, the military end of it. And anyway, I look forward to, in the next couple of months, telling you more about Horace Hamilton. So coming up on Saturday, November 10th, we'll be able to honor him in Leander and welcome our Pearl Harbor survivor. I think it's very important, of course, for us to recognize our military people and particularly someone like him that has done so much for his country and had a real young wake-up call. And you'll find he's just... Is engaging and... Ooh, my time's almost up. He's just wonderful. He's 94, and he will... He can just tell stories as long as your arm. And so even though I've known him for years, he comes up with new ones all the time. So I look forward to informing y'all about him and showing his picture and working with the mayor and the city and all that kind of stuff in the next few months. And I made it within my time.
Mitch Fuller?
Mayor, thanks for making me follow Karen Thompson. That is never fun. And Karen, I want to thank you. That was a great trip to drive to Caldwell, Texas, to see Mr. Hamilton. And one thing Karen forgot to mention was that Horace's great-grandfather is one of the founders of Williamson County. So their roots and their contributions to Williamson County are just tremendous. Again, my name's Mitch Fuller, and I'm the senior vice commander of Leander, VFW Post 10427, and I'm here to talk about a couple of upcoming events and invite you all to. But first, I want to thank Wayne Watts, who's been working with the post. And by the way, we're happy to be fully in the city of Leander. We've got some water and wastewater access stuff that we're working with, and Wayne has been excellent. So Wayne, thank you for working with us on that. And the sense of urgency to get that done is critical because our well went out and we had to spend over $11,000 to fix our well water. So we have well water and septic for our wastewater. But I want to talk about a couple of upcoming events. Tomorrow night is our stake night, and I remember seeing a couple of you at a candidate forum, a group rented our hall for the candidate forum. So come back tomorrow night, a little more relaxing time, and have a stake with us. And we've got a couple of veterans anniversary events that are coming up. Next Friday is our ceremony to honor the end of the Korean War on July 27th. That will be at the post. And August 31st is the ceremony that recognizes the end of Operation Iraqi Freedom. It's meaningful to me. I am an Iraq War veteran, and we're looking at doing that in the public. So the post is going to start thinking about doing some of our ceremonies out in the public. So we're going to work with your Parks Department and probably do that. More to follow on that. Do that ceremony on Saturday, September 1st, to honor Operation Iraqi Freedom. But again, thank you so much for working with us on our water and wastewater issues. Please come out to the post tomorrow night. You guys are always welcome. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Is there anybody else going once, going twice? All right. So next, we move to our consent agenda. This is an action item.
Motion to approve?
A second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Shepherd and a second by Councilmember Navarrete.
Sir, that was a motion by Councilmember Navarrete with a second by Councilmember Shepherd.
Just reverse that. So all in favor? So approved. All right. So next, we move on to our regular agenda. Let's see. We're going to move to the public hearing... I'm sorry. Number 14 on our regular agenda is discuss and consider adding a future land use petition. And I am the sponsor. I do have a guest that is signed up to discuss this, Lyle Grimes.
Good evening, council and guests. My name is Lyle Grimes, and I am here and speaking in favor of this. And the reason being, I was on the city council for four years in Cedar Park, and I was on the council before we enacted the new process and after. So I just want to give you my perspective and why I believe it's actually a great process for us, not only for the city council in Cedar Park, but also for the citizens, the staff, and actually the developers. So before we put this process in place, we had the city staff and the developers went through kind of what you're doing here now, is they went through the petition process. They spent a lot of time, energy, and effort working with the developers, coming up with some part of a plan that they thought might work out. They went to our P&amp;Z. They spent a lot of time, energy, and effort, hours, to be honest with you. And the developers spent a lot of money. They'd go through the P&amp;Z process. Maybe it'd work out, maybe it wouldn't. Sometimes they'd have to go through several revisions to our zoning process. And if they were to get through the P&amp;Z process, maybe five to two, maybe six to one, who knows? It would sometimes come before the city council, and sometimes we'd have a lot of residents come out for, and sometimes a lot of them against. And so sometimes it would die on the vine in front of the city council. So unfortunately, we would be very frustrated with the process. How did it get to this point? How did it get all the way to us and then have to die? So we came up with this process, and what it does, it allows the developer to come before us and just show us the plan before it even starts the process. This is their idea. This is their process. This is what they want to happen. And that gives us the opportunity to say, hey, it's a great idea. Or, yeah, it's not for our city. And so what it does is it prevents the developer to invest a lot of time, energy, and effort and money, but also it prevents our city to have to invest that time, energy, and effort if it's something that's really not for our city. If it is, it gives the opportunity for the council to have their input before the process even starts. So that's just my input and my thoughts on the subject. Again, it's up to you and what's best for Leander. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel, I brought this up as a result of actually meetings that we've had in the past similar to last council meeting where there were items that had been in the works for six months to a year that probably were not going to pass yet. You know, they might sometimes have complied with either, you know, certain types of zoning that was allowed, but it probably needed at some point for somebody to, you know, give the developer the heads up that it probably wasn't going to pass. I've looked at different cities and how they try to handle some of this. I absolutely think this, although we can look at ways that we can tweak it, is a very good solution. The idea would be that, you know, when the process starts, the developer has the opportunity to go straight to the council where the council can discuss, not vote on it, but the council can give direction to the developer. They can give direction to staff. You can also... We could also have, and I would like, citizen comments so that when citizens are aware of this early on, they can participate in the discussion about whether this is the best project for their area. I think this would be fantastic, and I would love for us to look into adopting just a slight change to our current policy and allow it to go to the council. And this would be... I would like it if we could do this on zoning situations as well as changes to the land use plan.
That was my question. That was my question, is this specific item just for the future land use?
Right.
Which we don't really... I mean, I know last week was an example of where this would come in handy, but really, I think what you're after is zoning requests as well and any sort of development requests.
Absolutely. So in effect, it would be sort of like a workshop that you could do around the petition that's been brought forth by someone. The petition goes through an approval process. When that approval is done, then it goes before council. Council has the opportunity to direct staff that this is something that we think is something we want to look into with the following changes, or, you know, we don't see this as something that the council would approve. And I think it would save a lot of people a lot of time. I think it would streamline our permitting processes. I think it would prevent some of the negative feedback we've seen from residents when something comes that the neighbors don't feel is appropriate in their area. So I think it's absolutely extremely beneficial, and I would love to see us incorporate this into what we're doing. Absolutely.
I have a comment. I actually saw this done in Cedar Park last week in front of their council, and it was really interesting. It was a piece of property that was at Lakeline and Park, and so it had been zoned commercial. I guess there was some, you know, different history with the land. And the developer came in front of council, and he wanted to do condos with some commercial. And council was going back and forth with feedback, and they actually kind of worked out details there of what they wanted to see to work out that mix of how much residential versus how much commercial. And it was a really neat process. I liked it, and I would love to see something like that expanded for zoning so that we can save people the time and heartache of coming in here when it's in the final stage, if we can expand that.
Do we know of any other cities that do this for zoning and not just...
I don't know about zoning, and I think that's probably something that we need to get our planning department involved in and just see about the feasibility of doing it. I do have the process that Cedar Park uses for their petition and amendments, and I'm going to pass these out. So at this time, I mean, I would love to... What would you recommend? Send it to the planning department to possibly, you know, give us like an estimate on how many cases might be coming here this way? You know, how much would it speed up what you're doing as far as permitting and maybe, you know, ease some of those cases that, you know, we just saw where somebody's been in the process for a year?
So you're talking about... I guess I'd need further clarification. Are you talking about totally circumventing the Planning and Zoning Commission and then let them give their spill to council directly and then come back around through?
Well, what this is, is they submit the petition. It goes to the council to take action on the petition itself.
Are you talking about zoning or just for the future land use?
Well, I mean, I would like to look at zoning as well as the land use plan amendments.
I think going with future land use is easy because it's already being done by our neighbors, and it's done in other territories... Other areas in other states as well. I heard that from the developers.
This is a pretty common process. It'd be because of what we've seen recently, but it's been going on for years, where an engineer, planning firm, developer, they spend tens of thousands of dollars going through the normal process with staff just to find out when it hits P&amp;Z that it doesn't work for some reason because our future land use map is 2D. And the team put together once every five years, their things here are moving a lot quicker than that. And every... So it might be on our future land use map as commercial, but then when you actually look at just that parcel, you can find out, well, new neighborhoods have come in, the topography doesn't allow commercial. So this is basically giving the landowners and developers just a second of our time to say, look, this is conceptually what I'd like to do here. Are you guys on board with this or not? That would have prevented the abatement company issue. He spent close to $40,000 in nine months going through staff, doing exactly what our ordinance says, and then it was shot down. So I feel like this is a signal to the developers and landowners that council is open for business. We want to hear it. It then goes through all the normal channels. It's not a binding, and it's not guaranteed that they're going to get the zoning. So it doesn't grant them any rights. It's just, yes, we like this. Let's work with staff to try to figure out what is the best way to get this done.
It really only adds one step, and that's... It's sort of a review process by council. So it's not really, you know, circumventing the planning process or P&amp;Z. It does go through those channels. It comes back to us for a first and second reading on the amendment. The last one, if it's approved, the ordinance is adopted, and the land use is amended.
I think in addition to having planning get back with us on this, I'd like legal council to be heavily involved in this because it's such a divergence from the way we've done it. I want to make sure that we do things properly.
Absolutely.
I think the other thing that we talked about last meeting was going through and looking at the future land use map and correcting some of those areas that happened because of that meeting and going throughout the entire city and making sure we don't have those situations happen again. Hopefully, that addresses this.
That process we absolutely need to do. It's just going to take some time. This would be something we could institute almost immediately, and I don't even think Cedar Park charges the applicant. And Cedar Park doesn't require that staff go through any review process, so it shouldn't take up more of their time.
Is this something we already do, though, in our workshops, when we have planning workshops?
I would say often no because the landowners and developers going through the planning process, unless they know enough about the situation, they wouldn't know that they needed to come here for this.
And I mean, the council still has the, you know, the review authority to accept the petition and accept it to come before council or to deny the petition. So I see it as a real benefit, and I think it helps the planning department. I think it helps our permitting process speed up, and I think it also really helps our neighborhoods to avoid the kind of situations where you do have things that, you know, they're not a good fit, and we can save the neighborhood and we can save the applicant a lot of time and the city a lot of money by doing something like this. So I wonder if we might be able to have our planning department and our legal advisors take a look at it and just come back to us with some kind of process, maybe looking at what other cities are doing, maybe taking guidance as far as like how much it speeds up.
I think instead of bringing it back as an agenda item, it would be a good idea to have a work session on that.
Okay.
So that there can be an exchange and not just...
Sure.
...a decision.
Okay. Yeah.
I think also it doesn't hurt anything to give it a shot. I think that the current process, we've seen the hiccups that happen, so why not give something new a try if there's already a process in place that our neighbors are doing successfully? And I'm sure we know people in Cedar Park that we can kind of get with within similar departments and figure out what works, what doesn't. And I think it's worth a shot.
So do we have a path forward on this as far as what we can do as far as working with you or getting something on a workshop?
I mean, we can come to a workshop. One thing to keep in mind is our city charter governs the procedures for amendments to our comprehensive plan, which the future land use plan is a part of. It gives you three options. The city council initiated, the planning commission initiated, or a city manager initiated amendment. I think what you're describing for a future land use plan case could work. I'm hesitant to say that it could work on a zoning case, but that's something I would want to talk with the city attorney about. But definitely on a future land use plan amendment, I think we could look into whether or not there could be a prior step before that amendment process is started.
Mr. Yantis, how many times a year do you think we update the future land use or add an amendment to the future land use map?
It's rare. I think we've done maybe two since 2015. So it's rare. That was, I guess, the only other thing I would mention is that I'm not sure that it would have solved the issue that you're describing from the last case because the applicant would have had no desire to change the future land use plan. What that applicant wanted was consistent with the future land use plan, so they wouldn't have had any desire to come before the council to amend the land use plan because what they were proposing to do was consistent with it.
Correct.
So I think what you're maybe getting at is more of a holistic review of the future land use plan.
That's what I'd like to see. I think it's great.
And a time to maybe accelerate the five-year amendment process.
Mr. Yantis, do you think that before we have whatever work session we come up with, you and your team could maybe brainstorm ways that we can sort of come up with something, whether it's this or something else, to jumpstart that zoning process to try and avoid what just happened last week and what we see frequently, actually, with people coming in imposing zoning changes?
Yeah, we can certainly look at and see in the context of what is required in terms of the procedural steps that have to be taken under state law for zoning cases and under our own charter and ordinances, but we can certainly look at what else could be done in that context.
That would be wonderful. It would save their time and our time as well. I mean, your department's time. So thank you very much.
I... All for improving what we're doing. I think that's something we should continually strive to do. I just want to make sure that we don't jump into something, that we stumble over ourselves trying to get to a better place without looking at all of the incremental differences that would apply. So I know it's worth giving it a shot, but I think giving a shot would be just having the discussion and making sure that we're clear on everything, and that way we could convey that to our landowners and developers as well, so that we're all on the same page from the beginning.
I would also just like to add that the one case that we are all referring to, this has been going on for years with developers and landowners investing a lot of time and money going through the process. And then, for some reason, when it hits P&amp;Z or the neighbors get notified, council sees it. These people have spent so many tens of thousands of dollars, and this is something I've seen work. I've requested it. I've had many developers and landowners actually also request something like this.
With a zoning change?
Yes. A review of, hey, we have this project. We think it would go really great here, but it may be slightly different than the zoning or slightly different than the future land use map. And before we put the property under contract and go through a nine-month feasibility and tens of thousands, we would just like a nod.
I think the challenge with that, as far as involving the neighborhood that would be adjacent to that project, is the public notice goes out as part of going through the system. So if we're not going to have that, we need to find a way to address notifying those neighbors.
Right. This isn't a replacement or change of anything else we do. This is just a heads up.
No, I hear you, but I'm saying if the idea is to engage the community prior to this going through the whole system and the developer going through expenditures, that we need a method to inform those neighbors what's coming up for discussion. that we need a, a method to inform those neighbors what's coming up for discussion because we wouldn't have a public notice.
Well, most times a public notice is an eight and a half by eleven sheet of paper tacked up on something outside their neighborhood. So.
Well, it's a yellow sign.
I know, but most people don't stop their car and look at every yellow sign.
And then they get something in the mail if they're within so many feet.
But I think uh, I mean, we've had situations where we had people coming up, you know, we've had gas stations that were being built and people, you know, it was way too late to do anything about it. So I think this, I think we, we need to be open to looking at what other cities are doing.
Sure.
And try to come up with what we can incorporate to streamline our process because it is an issue. We want to fix it. So we need to all be open to whatever we can do to fix it.
And it actually, I'm sorry, it would be posted because it would be on our agendas.
Right. I think also too, a lot of times we can look at agendas and, and kind of have an idea of what neighbors are and are not going to be approve, proving of, I'm doing a great job tonight.
So we have a plan going forward?
So does the council want to set a, a date for when that workshop would be held?
I, I think it would be important for you guys to let us know how much time you might need to put something together before we schedule that.
I mean, I don't think we need a lot of time. I think a month would be sufficient to be able to.
Do we have another workshop planned for somebody else?
I don't think so.
Can we do it by the retreat?
No.
Next weekend, next weekend.
No, I'd have to get all that together tomorrow. I mean, I will work late, I promise.
Do you need to leave now?
Um, but maybe one of the, one of the council meetings in August. I, it wouldn't take long to pull together what the other cities around us are doing. That, that part I can do just in a few days. Um, and then I just would want to have a little bit of time to uh, consult with Ms. Sines on some of the legal issues related to the notice and procedural pieces of it, but we can certainly do that.
Okay.
By August.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we're going to open our public hearing. This is uh, these are action items. Number fifteen is conduct a public hearing regarding special use case eighteen dash SU dash zero zero six to allow for a daycare with modifications to the site development standards on one parcel of land approximately one acre in size. More particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District Parcel R zero three one two one four, generally located to the southeast of the intersection of Raider Way and East Crystal Falls Parkway and addressed as ten eight oh four East Crystal Falls Parkway, Leander, Williamson County, Texas. Mr. Yanis.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. This is um, a public hearing and first reading of a special use case for um, a piece of property that's at the intersection of Raider Way and East Crystal Falls Parkway. This special use case is um, is being presented in order to allow a temporary use on a piece of property that actually has the proper base zoning for the use, which is a daycare. The reason for the special use case is to allow for the site to be occupied for commercial um, use without bringing the site into compliance with the site development standards in the composite zoning ordinance for a temporary period of time. So it essentially allows for the operator of the daycare to move into an existing structure that was previously a residential home. Making whatever uh, code modifications are required to that structure to be able to operate a daycare in it, but not having to do all of the site development work. That would also be associated with a commercial venture on the site. And that would be just for a temporary period of time, uh, which would be the duration of the lease uh, of the site, which is three years. Um, and so the Planning and Zoning Commission did hear this at their meeting last week and they did unanimously recommend approval of the special use permit. And um, I know the applicant is, is here and I'm sure would be happy to address the council.
Okay, so um, we do not have anybody signed up to speak. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item?
Yes. Hi guys, just want to introduce myself. I'm Maria. I'm a champion.
If you, after this, if you could fill out a card for her, um, give your name and address, if that's okay?
Yes.
You have three minutes.
Okay, I'm the owner of Champion Kids Preschool. Um, I know we use the word daycare, but it's not, um, it's, it's not a daycare. It's a part-time preschool program for stay-at-home moms here in Leander. So it's a one, two, or three-day program. So our program is from nine to two. Um, basically I've been in existence business-wise. I've been renting from Leander United Methodist Church one day a week on Wednesdays. Um, I'm also the director for their Tuesday, Thursday program. Uh, but as the years, I've been there for five years. So as the years have gone on, more and more mommies want more Target shopping time, I guess. And so we've grown tremendously. And uh, so then I started running from Rockbridge Church, which is um, in Cedar Park on New Hope on Monday, Friday. So long story short, we've been operating from two different churches and we've grown to the point that we need our own building. I've been very grateful to rent from the churches, but we found this home on Crystal Falls. It's totally set up and ready for us to use, uh, except for, um, I know that we need to do parking. The owner, Dr. Barnett, is um, not wanting to spend that much money on a concrete parking lot. So that's where I asked the city to grant me permission to maybe do some crushed granite parking, like my neighbor next door. Um, she's a daycare as well. Leslie and I went to college together. And so I would try to match her parking as, as much as possible to make it very uniformed and, and nice. And so that's my goal and I, I think that's all I needed to share. I just wanted to make sure that you guys knew that we're three days a week for five hours. We actually follow the Leander ISD school schedule and um, mommies love us. Do y'all have any questions for me or? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Right, so we're going to discuss and consider action on the first reading of an ordinance regarding special use case eighteen dash SU dash zero zero six to allow for a daycare with modifications to the site development standards on one parcel of land, one acre in size, described by Williamson Central Appraisal Dist- District Parcel R zero three one two one four, located to the southeast of the intersection of Raider Way and East Crystal Falls Parkway and addressed as ten eight oh four East Crystal Falls Parkway, Leander, Williamson County, Texas.
Motion, sorry, motion to approve?
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Sederquist with a second by Councilmember Shepherd. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion is passed unanimously. All right, number sixteen, conduct a public hearing regarding zoning case eighteen dash Z dash zero zero five to amend requirements associated with the Horseshoe Drive Townhouses PUD Plan Unit Development with a base zoning, uh, zoning district of SFT dash two dash A, single-family townhouse, townhouse on one parcel of land approximately four point seven three zero six acres in size. More particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District Parcel R zero three six four six zero, more commonly known as five-ten Horseshoe Drive, Leander, Williamson County, Texas. Mr. Yanis?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is a public hearing and first reading of an amendment to an existing planned unit development. Uh, the applicant has actually requested that action on this item be postponed. And so uh, I think it's at the um, council's discretion, um, how to handle that. Um, you can conduct the public hearing and um, and then I think the, the applicant has requested to postpone action on the item.
Okay.
I make a motion to postpone.
We are advertised for the public hearing.
Thank you.
Uh, is there anyone signed up? Would anybody like to speak on this item? I do not have anybody signed up. Uh, does the applicant wish to make a presentation? Okay, so we're going to discuss and consider action on the first reading of an ordinance regarding the zoning case that I just described, more commonly known as five-ten Horseshoe Drive, Leander, Williamson County, Texas.
I would like to make a motion to postpone.
I have a motion to postpone by Councilmember Cannon.
I'll second.
With a second by Councilmember Sedequist. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Just, oh.
Can you set a date to wish your postponing?
I make a motion to postpone for two weeks till the next council meeting.
Is that August second?
August second.
Okay, so we have a motion to postpone till the August second regular council meeting. Uh, do you want to revise your second?
Second again.
Okay, we have a second by Councilmember Sedequist. Uh, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. All right, number seventeen, conduct a public hearing regarding zoning case eighteen dash TO, T zero D uh, Z dash zero one three to amend the current zoning of PUD, TOD, Plan Unit Development Transit Oriented Development to PUD, TOD, Plan Unit Development Transit Oriented Development with the following base zoning districts. SFT dash two dash A, which is single-family townhouse. MF dash two dash A, which is multifamily. GC dash three dash A, which is general commercial. On two parcels of land approximately seventy-seven point two three four acres in size. More particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District Parcels R zero five one five nine two and R four zero three five two four, located southwest of the intersection of RM twenty-two forty-three and one eighty-three A Toll Road, Leander, Williamson County, Texas. Mr. Yanis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is a public hearing and first reading of a zoning case for Plan Unit Development District at the southwest corner of the intersection of twenty-two forty-three and one eighty-three A. The council last year approved a comprehensive plan amendment for this property uh, and on November sixteenth of twenty-seventeen in order to facilitate the ability to develop a mixed-use project at this intersection. That uh, approval was contingent upon the applicant uh, completing the purchase of the land by November of this year, so November of twenty-eighteen. Uh, the proposal in the PUD is for a mix of commercial and residential development centered around a central water feature on the site. And the applicant has chosen three different zoning districts as, as the base districts with some modifications. Uh, the GC, uh, General Commercial District, the Multifamily District, and the Single Family Townhouse District. Some of the um, major requests in terms of the changes to the development standards would be an increase in the residential density for the multifamily uh, component of the property uh, to a uh, average of forty-five units per acre. It could go as high as sixty units per acre if the uh, multifamily development utilizes uh, structured parking. Uh, but if it's surface parked, it would be limited to thirty-eight units per acre. Uh, there's also been a request to allow for some outdoor entertainment uses on the site uh, associated with the outdoor water feature. Um, also a request to be able to increase the building height to ninety-five feet for hotel uses and a hundred and twenty feet for office uses with a specified setback from the southern border of the property. Uh, there was a request to allow for uh, some modifications to the A Street standards uh, to allow for pedestrian-only um, access on those. And then uh, to reduce the parking requirements for multifamily from thirty-five percent garage park to twenty-five percent. And also a request has been made to modify the Riparian Corridor setback standards uh, along, uh, this property has actually two corridors, two creek corridors on it. You can see on the map. This is Mason Creek right here and this is Brushy Creek right here, both of which would require a hundred-foot setback on both sides of the center line uh, in accordance with the city's Riparian Corridor setback standards. Um, and then finally, um, another request was to receive a hundred percent parkland dedication credit for the um, construction of the central water feature. The Planning and Zoning Commission did um, hold a lengthy public hearing on this project at their meeting last week. And their recommendation to the council was to consider the following items prior to approval. One, provide architectural renderings of the multifamily buildings to justify the requested reduction in the garage parking standards. Two, to update the parkland dedication and improvement provisions to either remove the reference to the fee in lieu of parkland credits associated with the additional park improvements or to demonstrate that the propos- that the proposal meets the intent of the ordinance with regards to providing public parkland. Three, to eliminate the waiver to the Riparian Corridor setback along Brushy Creek and to allow it um, along Mason Creek only if the developer is able to get uh, regulatory approval for the relocation of the Mason Creek Tributary. Four, to provide additional detail on the conceptual site layout and land use plan to provide more specificity regarding the location of the land uses, primary streets, open spaces, and recreational improvements. Uh, five, to limit the height of the multifamily to four stories adjacent to the southern boundary and limit the height of the multifamily for all other locations to five stories. Uh, six, to address the traffic and connectivity concerns associated with the property to the south. And seven, to update the type four site component uh, to reduce the permitted uses to only allow the uses that are necessary for the proposed project. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions after the public hearing. I do know the applicant is here and I'm sure um, would like to present to the council as well.
Good evening, council. My name's Michael Neary, four-three-two-one Glen Air in Dallas. Thank you for bearing with me while I make a slight change. Had a little mistake in there. Uh, our company's been in business over forty years. Our.
Michael, is your microphone on?
I believe so. It's green light. Uh, our company's been in business over forty years. Uh, our principals have been involved in some local developments, including the Ranch at Brushy Creek, Pioneer Crossing, and currently the Colony in Bastrop. I want to be clear about where we are in the entitlement process. We're here tonight to request approval of a PUD to establish the base zoning districts and related code modifications that apply to those districts. This PUD application stands alone and does not include a concept plan or preliminary plat, which are two things you often see submitted with a PUD application. Those two steps will follow sequentially as we move towards developing the product. As a standalone application, this PUD request includes a little less detail than those that are submitted with those items. Here's a, thank you. Th- this is a visual that shows a couple of images. On the left you have kind of a zoning overlay, just establishing base districts, general commercial, multifamily, single-family residential. On the right, a more detailed concept plan indicating some of the streets, access points. And those are steps that'll come later. The step after that's the plat where you get a lot more detail. And like I said, the concept plan and plat are not part of this application. We presented this application last week to P and Z. Uh, I should point out that m- most of the caveats in their recommendation were proposals that we made uh, as part of our presentation. So the commission motion to recommend approval of the PUD subject to a number of amendments that Mr. Yanis just outlined and voted five-nothing to approve the motion. Little bit of overview on the project. Leander Springs is intended to be an entertainment-focused mixed-use project centered around a central water feature. We're requesting three base zoning districts. That's general commercial, multifamily, and single-family townhome. Couple of key points to take away are that we, you know, we are asking for increased density. This property's in the TOD. Each base zoning district requires a hundred percent type A architecture and there are no uh, variance requests to that architecture standard. Uh, the PUD's water future is required to be constructed with the first phase of development. And we do have signed LOIs from entertainment venues such as movie theater, bowling, uh, concept in the first phase of apartments. Some of the key code modifications that are outlined in the PUD document and like I mentioned, an increase in density, uh, thirty-eight units to the acre for surface parking, up to sixty for structured parking, but an overall maximum of forty-five units. The garage requirement uh, reduction request to twenty-five percent. In the commercial district, we do have some height uh, variance requests. So within a hundred and fifty feet of our southern border, we're maxing out at sixty feet, which is below uh, the ordinance. Seventy-five feet for all uses beyond a hundred and fifty feet, except for hotel and office have uh, restrictions to ninety-five and at one-twenty where the, for office, anything over ninety-five is required to be at least three hundred feet from the southern border. Uh, a couple of the other code modifications, the, we are in the conventional development sector of the TOD. So we have some A and B street standards that apply. We are asking that the A Street not be required to accommodate vehicles. And if not, i- if it's constructed as a pedestrian pathway, then it should not obviously require on-street parking. Uh, some of the additional standards, we've asked for. Some of the additional standards we've asked for reprieve from if the buildings fronting them do not contain commercial uses on the ground floor, and therefore, we shouldn't be obligated to provide twelve-foot wide sidewalks that are there to support kind of complimentary uses like an outdoor restaurant patio or something like that. We did have in the PUD language that Mr. Yanis mentioned about requesting credits towards fees in lieu of parkland dedication, and we had amendments to the riparian corridor. Staff expressed a couple of reservations with the PUD language as submitted. We expected all of them except for one when we finalized the document. Mr. Yanis has requested that we allow council the opportunity to review proposed renderings of the multifamily project in order to trigger any waiver to the thirty-five percent garage door requirement. We did not reach an agreement on the credit for fee in lieu of parkland dedication at the time of submission nor the riparian corridor. Relative to the lack of specificity for zoning districts, that came about because I expressed a desire to have some flexibility in the size, shape, location of the zoning districts to respond to market conditions over time. Staff pointed me to a number of different PUDs. One in particular that we modeled after was the mixed-use portion of the Treviso PUD, labeled sixty-five acres as a hundred percent mixed-use with total flexibility to put the different zoning districts anywhere. We talked about that, amended the document, came back. Staff came back to me and said, you know what, I think we'd feel better if we went back to the base zoning districts, not calling this mixed-use across the board. And so we did that. We did provide for language in the PUD document that allows us flexibility in where it goes. Staff asked for a three-hundred-foot setback from our western boundary for the general commercial zone. Of course, we accepted that. The general commercial users want to be oriented towards one-eighty-three A or in the district around the eastern side of the water feature, which is where we intend to put them. This is just a slide that demonstrates the riparian corridor issue that this creates for us. So all of this up here is Brushy Creek, this blue line, and that's all floodplain where the trees are. But this Mason Creek Tributary comes down, it's about eleven-hundred feet. This dotted line provides, just on one side, shows a hundred-foot setback. So if you take a hundred feet on each side times eleven-hundred feet, that's approximately five acres of land, and then furthermore, it isolates this land up here. So this land owns, I believe, thirty-point-seven-two acres, and that ordinance, you know, ends up taking about fifteen acres of land from being developable to non-developable, and that's a real cost. To address some of the staff's solutions, we came in last week and proposed that any reduction to the garage requirement would require council's approval of proposed renderings at the, you know, prior to development. The parkland dedication agreement is not required to be set in place until approval of the concept plan, so we asked to table that item and remove it from the PUD. And on the right, riparian corridor, we're proposing to incorporate averaging language along the Brushy Creek corridor and to receive a waiver along Mason Creek if we are successful in redirecting that with appropriate approvals. I think everybody's aware that Overlook Estates neighborhood is southwest of us, and we've tried to be a good neighbor. This kind of details a series of meetings we had. We first met with them in April, followed up with the Board of Directors in May. Last week, prior to P and Z, we received an email expressing additional concerns, which we responded to that evening. And then I drove down and met with homeowners last Wednesday beforehand, talked about their concerns. I think we've heard their concerns, we've made proposals to address them as best we can. We've had continued dialogue this week, received emails and phone calls. We met with the HOA president again last night, and then afterwards, met with another ten residents for about two-and-a-half hours here across the street. To outline some of their concerns that we've heard, now, we've heard we don't want six- and seven-story apartment buildings. We've also heard their request to limit multifamily buildings on the southern edge of the property to three stories. The other concerns are increased neighborhood traffic, that our water future would not be built. They've heard that we're intending to build an outdoor concert venue, and they have concern about some of the type-four language that's incorporated into our general commercial zoning districts relative to noise. So, I'll step back and walk through those. So, a number of our proposals address these items. We have agreed, and I would like to be clear that we did not in our submission ask for variances to multifamily height ordinance, nor the city of Leander's noise ordinance. So both those would be in place. We have proposed to explicitly limit multifamily development to five stories. That would really only apply if you got, found yourself in a market that supported sixty unit to the acre, you know, five-story wrap product. That point is not here in Leander today. Relative to increased neighborhood traffic, our site is not adjacent to their site. I think we're all aware that the tract to the south of us is thirty acres. It's got existing zoning for multifamily, single-family, urban, and general commercial. The residents, I think, have valid concerns about the concept plan and the point of access at their, you know, the terminus of Overlook Bend where they have currently a cul-de-sac. So that's something that, obviously, they're concerned about. I don't believe that our project would increase their traffic at all. You know, the multifamily users, as we develop out the site, would have access directly to one-eighty-three A and then twenty-two forty-three to the north. Again, the water feature requires construction during Phase One. As far as outdoor concert venue noise, we do not intend to build any sort of outdoor concert venue, and we have updated our type-three language to address this concern this week. We would propose to remove amusement parks as well as outdoor amplified sound systems or similar conditions from this language. So I've spoken with staff this week. Obviously, there's a number of conditions in the P and Z recommendation. I think we're going to reach that point tonight. If somebody were to make a motion to approve with requested changes, my understanding is that if it were passed, we would then work with staff over the next week to amend the PUD document, that provide a red line and a clean copy that would then be reflected, that would reflect the required changes and be submitted in the materials for the council meeting for a second reading, and that's how they would get incorporated into the document that ultimately is adopted. Like to just go over some of our proposed changes. To address city concerns, we are, again, requiring council approval of proposed renderings in order to trigger any waiver to reduce the required percentage of units with garage parking. We are removing language regarding credits against fees in lieu of parkland dedication for, relative to riparian corridor, we're going to allow averaging along the Brushy Creek corridor and then waive riparian corridor along Mason Creek in the event that we're able to relocate that to the west. We also have heard some concerns and would like to further define the water feature a little bit to include conditioned water suitable for recreational use and not intended for stormwater runoff detention. To address our neighborhood concerns, relative to the multifamily zoning districts, we want to limit height to five stories. We do propose to limit height of buildings closest to the PUD's southern border to three stories. That would also include a, you know, a hundred-and-fifty feet or so, we can work on the exact distance up the western border, which is actually, I believe, affects them a little bit more, to make sure they have a lower building closest to them. And then any, you know, any higher buildings would be behind those, and then also, the site dips down from south to north significantly, which would hide those further. Those two we've addressed. Relative to the general commercial districts, like I just mentioned, we'd propose to remove amusement parks and outdoor amplified sound systems from that language as well. So in conclusion, you know, this is a unique project. We've tried to be a good neighbor. We've met with the neighbors multiple times over the last three or four months. We've heard their concerns. I think it's apparent that we've tried to address them, and we respectfully request your support tonight. Thank you. I'll leave that right there.
All right, thank you. We do have several people signed up to speak. Number one, Laura Aldred. Good timing. I can move on, I can come back to you.
Well, I just am listening for the first time to this proposal, and I've been a resident of Leander for about ten years.
Can you speak to the microphone?
Okay, sorry. I needed this. Oh, sorry, my name's Laura Aldred, and just came back and heard this wonderful presentation. I understand some possible concerns for the neighborhood that's nearby, and it sounds like, after listening to the presentation, they're very concerned about their worries. But I think that the proposal is so what Leander needs. We need someplace to go in our own community. The proposal for this feature and everything else that can piggyback onto it, I think is going to be great. And I think that they're cognizant for the neighborhood and their worries for noise and their property values, and so I think it's a great addition for our city. I think it's finally time to grow and be, not have to drive to Cedar Park or Round Rock or Austin. I would love to see it for my family, so.
State your name and address, please.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Haynes. I live at fifteen-oh-two El Cielo. My family and I have lived in Leander for fourteen years, my husband and I and our two children. We have a fifteen-year-old and a twelve-year-old, and like Laura said, you know, we're constantly driving to Georgetown and the Domain, and even Cedar Park now has grown so much to spend our money to eat and to be entertained and for our kids to have somewhere fun to hang out while we're eating and we're blowing off steam, and it would just be nice to be able to spend that money here in our own town, and we've seen it go through so many changes since we've moved here. There's been so much growth, but a lot of residential growth, but not the type of commercial growth that we'd like to see. You know, I don't need another mattress store, I don't need another mechanic. I need somewhere to go with my family that's close by, where we can go and eat and have a good time, and the kids can be entertained, and it sounds like, from everything that I've heard, that this water feature development is going to have all of that. It's going to have the retail opportunities, the entertainment, the dining, like Laura said, exactly what our community needs, and I feel like what we've kind of been trying to work towards for so long, but we just can't quite get there, and I think this would be the perfect opportunity for that, so I'm in full support of it. Thank you.
Tina Malash.
Hello, I'm Tina Malash. I live at one-nine-oh-eight Palace Fair Days, and I've been a resident for thirty-five years in Leander, and I just want to say it's time. It's time that we have somewhere to go for our families and our children to play and enjoy our community. The commercial aspect has got to get better. Multifamily, commercial, water parks, I'm in. Thank you.
Alexandria Lindner.
Hello, my name's Alex Linden, and I live at sixteen-oh-two Coronado. My family and I, we've lived in Leander for probably about twelve years now. I've got an eight-year-old and a ten-year-old, and we are constantly looking for somewhere to go. You know, I'm trying to find places where we can go eat and have a good time so they're not playing on the screen, so for going out to eat, we are, we're going down to Austin, we're going to Cedar Park, we're going to Georgetown, mainly because those are going to be areas where they have outdoor venues and spaces where the kids can actually play outside while we're eating dinner, relaxing, and having a good time, instead of them, you know, sitting at a table like, you know, playing on their phones or doing whatever. I would love to do that here in Leander, so I am definitely for this property coming to Leander so that we have something else to do. I looked up the water, you know, water feature, the water feature that's being proposed to go in, and the thought of being able to go and maybe they can kayak or, you know, paddleboard, you know, in the midst of, you know, waiting to eat, I think is fantastic, so we're definitely pro, pro this project. Thanks.
Thank you. Jason Holmes. State your name and address, you have three minutes.
Hi, yes, my name's Jason Holmes. I'm at ten-thirteen Overlook Bend. I'm on the HOA. I communicated with a few of you via email, so I think you're aware of, you know, some of our concerns, and I really do, I said this before, I really do appreciate how much the developer has met with us to work with the issues that we've discussed and the concerns, the previous comments here. I completely agree with them. In terms of, we are not, I don't, maybe, okay, I don't want to speak for everybody, I am not against the development of this kind in Leander. I do, I do think it would be a good thing. Our main concerns have been on making sure that it is what it says it is, and, and so, you know, we want to make sure that the description of this, as it moves forward, we've seen, we've seen great things, you know, the potential for the movie theater and for this really nice venue with the water feature, nice pictures of very nice office buildings, not really high office buildings, but nice office buildings, things that could be used, and we just want to make sure that that is what it ends up being. And, and so the variances requested, totally get where the developer's coming from, they want the flexibility. I also think it seems, it's not easy, but it's definitely doable to amend a PUD to where I don't, I don't necessarily think that there needs to be complete, you know, a hundred-and-twenty feet seems silly to me for, for a height of a office building at that location at this time. Maybe it's not, based on, based on your opinions, but if it's not, it would make more sense to me to, to not add the waiver at this time, and then, you know, if it becomes that there's a demand for that, then we can go ahead and modify it, and it would make more sense when there is demand for it. So, like I said, you know, this would be, this would be a great thing in our community. Somebody has to, somebody has to live next to it and have their concerns, and it's going to be us and the apartments to the south. We do have the concerns of traffic, which the developer doesn't really have any direct concern or influence over, but we do want to bring that, you know, we have neighbors here that are saying, we're going to come and use this venue, we want to make sure that, that there, that there aren't, you know, a lot of neighbors coming through our streets, and so we just want to prevent that from happening as well. And I just appreciate you guys' time and listening. We, we're excited about where Leander's going, and we just want to, you know, have our voices heard and make sure that things are going in a direction that works for us as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Greg Brown. Mr. Brown, state your name and address, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Greg Brown, and I live at nine-thirty-seven McCavit Drive. Since the zoning hearing last week, I became aware of the North Line project. This project not only has the approval, but apparently the financial support of the city, even though some of the council members did not agree with the way the funding was implemented. It appears the development is well-planned and scheduled to start in late at twenty-eighteen. I'm sure the council members realize that the zoning and project proposed tonight, located only two exitts away, and has many of the same features as the North Line project. Rather than cramming all this development and the associated strain on Leander's infrastructure into a narrow window, doesn't it make more sense to have at least part of the North Line project completed before the development of the same type is allowed in the same area? At the zoning planning last week, zoning meeting, I mean, we didn't seem to think they had any kind of a real plan. They certainly did not present one, and any statements made seemed to include an "at-this-time" qualifier or something that basically made them empty promises. And that leaves us homeowners in a position of having to trust that they are operating in good faith. And from what I understand, if this proposal passes... And from what I understand, if this proposal passes, they can, I mean, we don't have any recourse if they're not. I'd really like to see more there, there, before we go on. And I wanted to say that I'm not opposed to commercial development in Leander. A city requires shopping, restaurants, entertainment venues, and office space to be livable. A proper mix of housing also leads to a more vibrant and diverse city. Also know that the parcel being discussed tonight and the block immediately north of my house will be developed at some point and probably sooner rather than later. I only ask that any developments be well-planned, truly address the needs of Leander's citizens, and have as little impact as possible on existing neighborhoods in the city of Leander. I think this proposal fails on all three counts. I respectfully request that the council deny the zoning changes in total and let the developer or some other party resubmit the changes in the future when they are better planned and more appropriate. I would like to thank the council for hearing my comments.
Michelle Brown.
Michelle Brown, 937 McCavit Drive. Thank you for allowing me to address the concerns we have as homeowners of the Leander Crossing subdivision. We've never been included in the plans for the development that will definitely affect our traffic flow, our home values and our quality of life. We're located directly adjacent to Overlook Estates and within range of the PUD. No disrespect to the developers, this is their job, they're doing it to the best of their abilities. But my concerns reiterated again are traffic, density and noise. Traffic flow 2243 is a windy two-track road. Traffic flow on 183A access road, this is Leander's Crossing primary access in and out of our neighborhood. Just adds density to the already overwhelmed streets as soon as it happens. Noise from the increase in density of multifamily development. Noise from the water feature and produced type of businesses that will bounce off the water feature. I believe the proposed PUD is a loss for the city of Leander master plan. I think that if they could develop within the range that you've already approved, it would be fine. We're not against the development, we're asking for a minimum of maintaining the property value and balance between single-family established neighborhoods and new expansion. This requested variance in the density of the multifamily units is a big concern. Without question, I think this will cause that space to be overbuilt. There's no strategy in place to handle the traffic, the noise, the loss of property value to the existing homeowners in the area. I'm asking that the variances be denied, resubmitted with a clear and concise plan to be in place. The Planning and Zoning Council had a lengthy discussion, yet allowed this to pass in the end. If variance is needed or approved, though should be tied 100% to this development, not to the sale of the land. This will guarantee that any variance is approved cannot be flipped by the developer. If this PUD's not economic within the existing parameters, maybe it's just not a good function for this space. Is it too much to ask that we as homeowners, taxpayers, voting Leander citizens get development in the land that we were assured when we invested in the existing property? We seem to keep changing it. If the city Leander allows developers to ask for variance for development and approve those variances just for the sake of developing, we risk a great loss of integrity of the city of Leander's vision for remaining in our space. Thank you. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Robin Stevens. State your name and address, you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Robin Stevens. I live at 1008 Overlook Bend. I live on a hill that will overlook this development. This has been a gut-wrenching, time-consuming experience for me and my family, which began in 2007, one year after moving to our beautiful home in Leander. We moved here for the extra space, the views and the small-town feel and to get away from the decline of our previous neighborhood after a multifamily development was built adjacent to us. We have wonderful neighbors and love running into people we know wherever we go. We did our best research to be sure of what was planned around us. But as you know, nothing is sure except for taxes and death. Things change and growth occurs and that's part of life. In 2007, we were approached by Ryan Betson and Noel Larson about future development plans adjacent to our subdivision. They carefully listened to our concerns and tried to work out a plan that was in the best interest of the city of Leander, the developers and the residents of Overlook Estates. We thought we had a good plan. Then 2008 hit and the economy tanked and the development was unable to move forward. And we were granted a reprieve from the inevitable until now. So of course, we want guarantees from Mr. Neely that he will complete what he proposes and won't sell out to something worse. But there are too many variables. It's too high, it's too dense, it's too noisy. And I'm leery of what will happen. After all, we're talking about my home, my investment, my quality of life, which will dramatically change from any type of development that occurs next to us. I want protection, I need protection for my home and for my family. I really appreciate being able to work together and establish something in the city of Leander that we can all live with, but remember, I have to live by it. I'm not going to like it no matter what. I like the cows. They're good neighbors. So it's not what I signed up for, it's not what I want, but I'm willing to work on embracing changes as long as you, Mayor Hill, and fellow city council members will work on gaining us, the homeowners, the most protection that you can and have it written in stone so that it cannot change. Put yourself in my shoes. Would you want to live next to it, see it, hear it? Will it increase or decrease the value of the property? Will it improve the quality of my life or the residents that live next to me? I will tell you right now, increased traffic flow through my neighborhood is an automatic deal breaker and I will fight it with my last dying breath. I really do appreciate the time you have spent on this for reading and responding to emails and the time the developers and owners of the property have spent answering our questions. I'm thankful for the opportunity to voice my opinions and concerns and will continue to do so as I'm certain this won't be the last time you see me up here. So until next time, thank you for listening. I love shopping, I love Costco's, but I don't want to live next to it.
Jeff Haynes.
Hi, my name is Jeff Haynes. I live at 1502 El Cielo. I've lived in Leander for 14 years. I'm in a unique position, I'm a business owner. We started in Leander but have recently moved to Cedar Park. We have 15 employees and we're growing. We've doubled in size each of the past couple of years. And that plan has continued. The reason why we had to move to Cedar Park to attract employees and to grow the business, we needed the facilities that Cedar Park offer. I'm also one of the businesses that signed a letter of intent with the new development to move my company back into Leander to be part of this development because I believe in the vision and the future that it brings back to Leander. We plan to be in Leander the rest of our lives as well and feel like Leander needs a little more or a lot more developments like this that will keep our dollars, not only our business dollars, but our resident dollars here versus in Austin and Cedar Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brian Saltanic.
Hi, my name is Brian Saltanic. I live at 933 McCavit. Actually, the Browns stole a lot of my thunder, so I'm just going to agree with everything that they said. We built in Leander Crossing with the understanding of the former development that was going in there. We were assured that there was going to be no development with any structures greater than three stories high. Anything about music venues and so forth, water parks was never on the table. The questions we have, the concerns we have is, we have an autistic child and we have a number of handicapped children in our neighborhood. And one of the things that is very scary to parents of autistic children is that your children can sometimes get out of the house regardless of how much effort you put in to keep them corralled. Or if they're out with us in the neighborhood, they tend to have a tendency to run into traffic. The concern, the nice thing about our neighborhood right now is we have very little traffic. So our children are a lot safer, you know, they're not completely safe, you do have cars come through. But the neighborhood knows that we have a number of handicapped children in the neighborhood. So there is a tendency for us to kind of look out for each other. The concerns I have is with all this increased traffic around us, people are going to get frustrated with the normal ingresses and egresses into this particular location. And they're going to try and find alternate routes, including neighborhoods. Google Maps is a wonderful thing, Waze is even better. So the concerns we have now is we have people that aren't familiar with the children in our neighborhood. And we're going to have these handicapped children at even higher risk of being killed or, you know, hit by these cars coming whizzing through our neighborhoods. That's a huge concern we have. The additional concern we have is with these multifamily units, especially the higher ones, is increased crime. Before I moved into that neighborhood, I lived in a multifamily unit for three years. We had constant police presence there, EMS. This is over in Cedar Park, Beckslade-Silverado. They were constantly there. So I don't know what kind of crimes studies they've done here to try and justify this. In my experience, we're going to have increased crime, especially if you're reducing the number of garages. Because one of the things that Beckslade offered was a certain number of garages, but they were very expensive to rent. So their price point was still pretty high and we still had higher crime. So that is a legitimate concern we have. Now, thank you. By the way, I'm going on record as being against this.
Mia Saltanic.
I'm Mia Saltanic, I'm at 933 McCavit. Most of the points have been made, I'm also at Leander Crossing. And my concern is also for the children. I don't know whose people are coming through, but one thing that we looked at before we made the purchase of our home earlier this year was looking at the plot maps and seeing what was going on behind us. We asked multiple questions before we made that purchase. And of course, I'm the mother of a child with disabilities and they look in the backyard and they talk about the forest and they look at the, you know, the cows. You know, we put a lot of thought and effort before we made this purchase. And it's heartbreaking to me that, you know, I feel like, in a sense, we've been lied to, although that's not the case, but it's very difficult for me to swallow what's happening just because we put so much of our time and effort into this. And I just, I hope they'll take that into consideration along with the other points that have been made so far this evening. And again, I'm against Agenda 17. Thank you.
Paul Ricks.
It's Ricks, how does it say?
Sorry, my bad writing.
My name is Paul Ricks. I live at 1004 Overlook Bend in Overlook Estates. And me and my lovely wife here, Susan, we moved here to Leander, approximately about pushing five years ago. Previously, we have lived off of Anderson Lane in Shool Creek, right close to Mopat. So I think it's probably pretty obvious why we're no longer there. And it seems like to me, the five years we've been here, I've been to four Planning Commission meetings about development in our area and to have four of these council meetings about development in our area. And it seems like to me, all the energy is on the developers getting everything to come here. And very little consideration being given to the existing developments, the people who have lived in Leander for a while. You know, we're not anti-development, we just want sensible development. And we travel a little bit and you go anywhere in this country and the development has overwhelmed the infrastructure. Traffic, you go anywhere, any place in this country, you're going to complain about traffic, you're going to complain about all these things going on. And I would love to see Leander grow and it's growing, apparently it's among the top 30 cities in the country. But we need sensible, balanced development. We need infrastructure to keep up with the development. And the gentleman, I'm sorry, I don't remember his name, he mentioned about traffic. I walk my dogs every day when the weather's decent. I go through my whole neighborhood, I go through Leander Crossings. And he was wrong about the traffic. And we were promised when they developed the Leander Crossing that traffic would be an issue. We don't have curbs, we don't have sidewalks in my neighborhood. We have a lot of people who use Leander Crossings, Overlook Estates for a shortcut to cut. And nobody knows why these people use shortcuts, faster, quicker. These people are not aware of what goes on in our neighborhood. We don't have, like I've said before, no streets, no sidewalks, no curbs. If you want to do something, we go out and, I mean, I walk my dogs in the street. We have two wheelchair people. Do their wheelchair in the streets, kids play in the streets. And people who are not familiar with our neighborhood, like this gentleman in Leander Crossings, people who are not familiar with your neighborhood, they're not going to notice this stuff. And I'm concerned about traffic, noise, density, safety and our quality of life. And also now I just found out that you want to do this North Line, a mile and a half, two miles north of this development, with apparently the same thing. Do we need two big developments? And I'm out of time. Anyway, thank you very much.
Sabra Fullwood.
Hi, I'm Sabra Fullwood. I live at 708 Overlook Bend. And I have to say, you know, I agree, I'm not here to impede progress and I realize that we need commercial growth. It's not only inevitable, but it's essential. And so I do see that side of it. However, I can't support this project. I wish I could, but I don't see it as that. I see this as an apartment project. We were told the roofs bring the retail when asked what was coming up. And I think the easiest thing to do is just to look at the map. And the two things that there are, two things that are going to take a whole lot of time and a whole lot of money. One is to relocate Mason Creek. If you don't relocate Mason Creek, you're looking at 15 acres there that are unusable, that can't be developed. The water feature takes five acres. The roads and sidewalks within the commercial area is another eight acres. So that's what, 13 and 15, I should have, it's 28 acres. They're asking for 39 acres of apartments. You're leaving less than 10 acres for all of these things that they already have LOIs for, a movie theater, a bowling alley. These are things that take up a huge amount of acreage. There's something wrong here. And so, as I said, you know, when I ask, it's, well, the first thing we're going to do is the water feature and the apartments that are right next to you. And if you, so why ask for, you know, oh, we're not going to go six stories, but we want 60 units per acre? How do you get 60 units on one acre if you don't go six stories? And so if you attach these variances to the PUD, they're there. I heard everybody talk about traffic and I was one of the ones that fought opening hidden trail. We were told it had to be open because we had to have two outlets for the fire department. After I fought so hard, I live right next or very close to that, I use it now. I hate to admit that. My husband did it first and the reason I use it is because, he did, he's the one that taught. Anyway, it's the quickest drought to 183A. And it's, and the people that spoke from Leander Crossing, it is so true. When I go through there in the summer at around 8 o'clock, there's a school bus for the special needs children. And I make sure, I'm very careful, but the really scary part is Richardson is the street. It's planned to be a through street and it would go directly to this development. These roads cannot handle it. As we said, at least they have sidewalks in Leander Crossing, but those roads are narrow too. There's children, our roads have 90-degree bends and no sidewalks and are really narrow. There's no way we can take the traffic. And thank you very much, thank y'all for all your time.
Diane Hess.
Hello, I'm Diane Hess and thank you so much for listening to all of our concerns. Oh, and the address is 1006 Overlook Bend. I'm sorry, my voice is scratchy. But I think just about everything has been said already, so I'm not going to take any of your time with that. I would just say that my main concern is with having a connector. And I didn't hear anything about, in the meetings from the developers, they said those were not designed yet and that would be up to the city. were not designed yet, and that would be up to the city. Well, if it's up to the city, I'm comfortable, because I feel like you'll do what is right by us. But I just can't see a plan that doesn't even know where the streets are going to be. And so that, that's one thing that worries me, because the, there has to be some way to get to the arterials, which as I said, are 2243 and 183A. And those connectors are what worry me. I would like to be sure that there are screening and setbacks if this plan goes in, and that it is written in concrete for what will be there. And the variances, I'm, I'm not too sure about that. I spent most of my life in schools, and we'd have rules. And, you know, sometimes there were variances to the rules. But if there was a rule there, there, there was a reason for it. And, you know, there might be a variance sometime, but it was for a very good reason. And these variances, are, are they for safety reasons? I can't see that. Are the variances for aesthetic reasons? I haven't seen that. Are they for some kind of emotional reason? I, I can't see that. So I would just like for you, the council, to think carefully about those. Thank you so much for listening to all of us.
Thank you. J.D. Cunningham? J.D. Cunningham? No? Okay, Chad Kyle? Kaya Ralston? They're all at Leander Beer Market. Thomas?
Yeah, I can, I know the speaker.
Okay.
Say Kenobi? Campbell? Thomas Campbell, sorry. Thomas Campbell? Marissa Balder Yaki? Somebody did this, just to have me butcher their names.
Do we need to go over there?
Clifford Hall?
Well, good evening, Mayor Hill and honored council members. Certainly, this is probably the most exciting project since I've been here in six months in Leander. Maybe we might even rank it up in the top 10 years, perhaps?
What's your area?
Oh, 604 Seating Path, Clifford Hall, H-A-L-L. And we are reviewing many interesting things about this, right? So I just want to say there, the many variances, right? And in general, I would, I was normally for this after a complicated discussion with the developer, because future zoning, to me, of the size of the property, if it were multifamily across 77 acres, it appears that the density of families would be some 30% greater, possibly even including the six or seven-story multifamily portion of their development. So I thought that was a win. I think it's a win for having the economic part, and I think it's a win for having the, the product in the middle. But do we make sure, do we know what we're voting for? My comment with the developer was, the math was complicated for me. I would request the Planning Commission perhaps review that. Is this a better deal for everyone? We need to make sure we know exactly what we're voting for. This is the most important development for a long time in our history. So let's get it, we'll get it right with a lot of detail. I'm proud of the developer for removing more words from the type 4 ordinance, the type 4 clause. The type 4 clause was asked to be brought into the commercial district for its, I guess, variability. It had music, it had outdoor loudspeakers, it had water parks, it has slides. It appeared to be that was fairly liberal, as they were able to add words to the type 4 clause from what was in the Leander ordinances. I just want to make a note here just about noise. Why is that important? Why do we think about that a little bit? You know, Austin, KUT, right? I think a respectable news organization, two and a half miles from Stubbs, Hyde Park, 45th Street, right? Noise is heard at their outdoor venue, according to the Austin Noise Ordinance. What does that mean in Leander? Well, this is Leander in a map outlined. You may notice that two and a half miles encompass approximately two-thirds of the citizens of Leander. And our city council meetings may be a tad noisy at night if your glass vibrates, that's prima facie evidence. So we want to be cautious about the language we use. Proud of them for removing it. I would like to consider that instead of a global piece of zoning for the development, it seems that each business, each piece of thing that's put in place can ask for its own variance at the proper time that it's built, and we can make a decision on each individual item as it comes up. Thank you for your time.
Tammy Fox Beaver? Tammy? James Sanders? James Sanders? All right, James is the last one that signed up to speak. I will make a note that William, William doesn't want to speak, but wants to register his vote against. And Anna Arenas is not speaking, but is against. So I will note those. I do not have anybody else sign up to speak. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on the item? Are you Tina? Tina Ritter? State your name and address.
Sure. Tina Ritter, 1000 Overlook Bend, Leander. I'm small, but I am mighty. Thanks for not looking past me. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I know Mr. Neary has stated in the past that we were very supportive of his concept, and we are, but you can tell by the crowd here that many of us are not, or many of us have some concerns. And I agree with most of the previous speakers. I'm personally concerned about the blanket variances that are being requested in the petition. And many of my concerns have already been addressed multiple times, so I'll save you that, that breath. But based on this crowd, I, I think there may have been more speakers and their points were made. I want to just focus on one point tonight, which is, as I understand it, the variances and how they're approved. And as we enter the next stage of council approvals, as long as those future plans are in compliance with the PUD rules and the variances approved tonight, then council approval is automatic, as I understand it. I'm not an expert. But that provides us zero opportunities for input or to recommend changes, and that's kind of scary to me as a homeowner. I'm not opposed to the development, because it's apartments next to nice homes, although it's not my favorite aspect of the development, to have apartments next to our homes. And I don't believe Leander gets to stay pastureland forever, because I've lived in the same house for 16 years in Leander, and that's not the case. But I do think if the development is implemented in the way that it's promised, that it might be a positive impact on our community. However, I do think the council exists to protect all of us as landowners. And we're just asking for an opportunity to review more details than have been provided to us in the petition, so that we can have an opportunity to see if those variances that are being requested make sense for both the developer and for us as the surrounding communities. And just a little history, we have been burned before by developers. So you'll see that we're very concerned. We want more than just promises. We'd like to see some meat to the proposals. And if we wait for the concept plan for more details, it'll be too late for that input. So we're just asking that you consider that, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on this item? Sir, if you fill out a card later, but state your name and address.
I did not fill out a card. But I won't be long-winded. My name is B.J. Hogan, and I own a tract of land at the northeast corner of 2243 in Palmer. Or, excuse me, Ronald Reagan. I always get corrected by staff. Mr. Kegel's corrected me on this many times. I'm, I'm working on it, Kent. I, I think that what I want to say is kind of been chewed around the edges a little bit, but first of all, will this project bring traffic issues? Absolutely. But we're going to have those anyway. Is it going to bring infrastructure issues? Yes, it is. We're going to have those anyway. But we, as citizens, are going to leave that to the capable hands of staff and council. What I want to know is, what do you do in Leander after you get off work in the evening for fun? This project will bring some fun to our area. And that's the thing that I think has really kind of been overlooked. We have been a heavy rooftop, business-anemic community for 25 years that I've been here. I'd like to see some business come. I'd like to see the revenue. All the people that come in that traffic are going to bring money to spend in our town, which is going to give our city the capability to do the things that need to be done, road-wise, infrastructure-wise, and always. So basically, I'm just up here to say I'm very much for this project. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Could you fill out a card for us, please?
Will I fill one out?
Yes, sir.
They're in the back outside the doors. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that'd like to speak on the item? Dr. Stiles? Did you leave the zebra right outside?
You know, I talked to our police chief, and Cedar Park has spent quite a bit of money on a command center in case volcanoes erupt in Cedar Park. And I suggested to Greg that we buy that zebra for him and designate it as his command center. He said he was all for it, and I think if we would do that, we'd win on the cool factor, hands down, and we'd get rid of that damn thing.
What is your address, sir?
4180 Highway 183, Leander, Texas. We also own property 101 East South Street. My family's been here for more than 100 years. This development lies to the east of our property, our family's property. I'd like to point out to you that this property is bound on the north by 2243, on the east by 183A. Down south, you have multifamily development. You have general commercial. I like cows, not big on zebras, but I like cows. And when people started moving in here, we supported them, because this town needed to grow or die. And we are to the point now to where we can't get commercial development in, because neighborhoods will turn out out of fear and say, we don't want this, this is going to hurt us. And some of their concerns are very, very legitimate, and you need to listen to them. But if we can't put commercial at the corner of 2243 and 183A, we're not going to be able to put it anywhere. I think with a little bit of tweaking of this, and tip of the hat to the people that live to the southwest of there, this can work. But if every time commercial development does come in here, and I understand it's not totally commercial development, but, but there is an aspect of it, if every time we try to do this, we turn it down because people don't want it close to them, we're not going to progress. And I think the way to do this is to take the residents that are near it, their concerns, into consideration and find a way to make this work, not just reject this out of hand, but let's see if we can't make this work, and let's see if we can't make it work everywhere throughout the town in a positive way. Thank y'all for your time, and consider buying that damn donkey.
Mr. Paul? Do you have a card filled out, sir?
If you'll notice, I'm not Jennifer. Jennifer excuses herself. She had my grandson yesterday.
You know, I expected her to be here. She had that baby.
She is not dedicated, I will tell you.
She won't come.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Where's your address, sir?
Let's see, which one you want? No, 2702 Brubeck and Cedar Park. I'm not here as a resident of Leander, I am as a property owner. And Mr. Barry Clark, John Lewis, Bruce Knockfor, and others have just asked me to, to tell you something real quick, that they have possibly competitive properties. They don't think of that this way. This is a spark that will generate more development at 183A and spark Mr. Tyneberg, spark everybody. But we need that spark. And where do you want that spark? Well, you want it where it's fairly well guaranteed to cause it. 2243, 183A, and most times, we're here with the neighborhood association who's contiguous. And that's what the argument is. And I understand the concerns. Usually, many times, I'm on your side, okay? And the same type of thing. But in this one, we have 30 acres between us. The developer has promised over and over not to create traffic that goes across into that neighborhood. There's going to be development in the 30 acres between them. I really doubt, I won't be here in 50 years, but I bet in 20 to 50 years, maybe even three years, you won't even be able to see this development. It slants downhill. 33 units on the south side, if there's just two levels of office or whatever in between, it won't even be visible. I wouldn't know where else to put this that makes more sense. Thanks you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Could you fill out a card?
Yeah, I'll get one. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this item? Mike Sanders? Could you state your name and address, sir?
Mr. Mayor and Council, it's good to be here speaking to you again tonight. My name is Mike Sanders. I live at 1016 West South Street in Leander. And I'm not speaking either for or against this, but I would like to offer some thoughts on it. I've listened to a number of people giving their opinions, their thoughts, and it seems to me that the, the thoughts kind of fall into three categories. The objections kind of fall into three categories. One is noise, the other is traffic, and the other is the apartments, the high-density housing. First of all, I'd like to address the, the noise issue. I think that, you know, this is right next to a six-lane tollway, three lanes in each direction, plus two lanes of service road at either side. So this is a major thoroughfare which produces a lot of noise. So I'm really surprised that, that noise would be an issue at this point. But I don't live there, so I don't know. It just seems to me, it doesn't seem like the place to be complaining about noise. We definitely need commercial development in Leander, and we have to decide where we want to put it. And if we're not going to put it next to the, the most, the biggest thoroughfare that we have going through our city, then where are we going to put it? You know, this is the place for commercial development. As far as traffic in the neighborhood, I don't really see how traffic could possibly go through that neighborhood to get to that location. But if I'm missing something, you know, I don't know what I'm missing. We definitely need to make the 2243 bigger at some point in time there, and I, I don't know if that's in the plans for the future of our city, but that certainly is a need that we have. As far as the, the apartments there, I think that's a bad idea. I think this whole concept of mixed-use development is, is a bad idea. I think that this should be a commercial development, and I don't, I'd really be curious to, to talk with the developer and find out if it was his idea to make this mixed-use, or if he was told by the city staff that, that he needed to do it this way. Because if he, if he could eliminate the apartments, that would at least eliminate one of the concerns that these folks have that, that live nearby. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you fill out a card for us, sir? Bill? You filled out a card?
Yeah, it's on 14. It's okay.
On item 14?
Yeah.
Did you want to change it to item 17?
That's fine. I think what I'm hearing is a lot of what we came up with. And what I'm looking at is, this is probably a great area for commercial development and office. There was an article... is this is probably a great area for commercial development and office. There was an article this week, I think it was, in the Impact Magazine for Leander, and it said, "We have too many apartments already. We can't bring the value of rentals up. That's been flat for three years now." So why do we keep putting it the, you know, station with the cap metro here? What are we putting in? We're putting in things that aren't going to increase us. I think commercial, you know, if you can protect those neighborhoods, because they have commercial, or they have concerns like we did at Savannah Ranch, you don't put things that are too close that aren't a good development. And that's what I think you were trying to say when you said we need to have citizen input probably to this process early on. And what I see is, what I'm hearing is, the citizens are scared because they're going to lose value in the property, and yet, we don't have, the mixed-use doesn't seem to work as well as, you know, if you look at Cedar Park, there is a definite trend. Here is an area of commercial, here is an area of residential, and here is an area of manufacturing. That's what we had when I developed land in Cincinnati, too. It was zones, not mixed, because people who live in their homes don't want to have that noise. They don't want to have the smoke, the other things. So I'm just saying, I think this kind of development needs to be looked at, whether it's, and I just, that's my opinion, as bad as it is sometimes. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. If you'd fill out a card for us, that'd be great.
Could you change?
Oh, I'm sorry. I found your card, by the way. I was scribbling on it. Thank you very much. Sir, would you like to speak? You'd state your name and address. You have three minutes.
I'm Will Strummer. I live at six eleven Scenic Path. That's the card you had a hard time reading earlier. I said I wasn't going to speak, but the one gentleman who said that he couldn't see how traffic could go through our neighborhood, I just had to correct that. I mean, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that they're going to connect those in those little roads. I mean, come on. So I think, you know, if you could figure out a way to not connect that, that'd be great. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak on this item?
Yes, I'll.
State your name and address.
My name is Susan Ricks. I live at one thousand four Overlook Bend. And I want to say that I am for commercial. I know Leander needs to progress. We have to, we have to keep up, and we need to bring more dollars in. What I'm not okay with is the residential and the apartments, as has been previously stated. Each and every council member, think about it. Would you want this in your backyard? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? I saw one hand over here.
I'm on ten.
Okay. Last chance, anyone else speak on this item? Okay, we're going to move ahead. We're going to go to action item, discuss and consider action on the first reading of an ordinance regarding zoning case eighteen dash C dash zero one four to amend the current zoning as we discussed before. Council?
Mr. Yanis, I have a question for you. Yes. Can you explain a little bit about the traffic from this property to Overlook Estates and the piece of property in between, and what the, I guess, the roadway plan has for that?
We don't have a, I lost my pointer. So the council will remember that there was a concept plan submitted for this property last year.
Okay.
And as a part of the approval of that concept plan, one of the items that came up was the connection of Overlook Bend into that tract right there.
Right.
And the council at that time said that at the preliminary plat stage, to work out an arrangement to where that was not open to vehicular traffic, that it would be either just emergency access only or pedestrian access only, whatever was the minimum amount required. We don't have a preliminary plat application yet for that property, but that was the council's direction at that time.
And that's still the plan.
And that's still the plan. This is, this street here, and I'm failing on the name of it, Richardson, thank you, Richardson, is intended to be extended north into this piece of similarly zoned property, because that's single-family residential as well, so that will provide access there. We don't have, from the developer, yet a plan for how the street network will connect through the multifamily and commercial site. But, you know, typically, there would be connections that would be required, right, for that. But again, those are things that would be worked out at the preliminary plat stage. What I will say is, our transportation plan doesn't have any required roadways on it that are on this property, other than the boundary streets, the twenty-two forty-three and one eighty-three A.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying on that.
Sure.
That's my only question for you, so.
Would there be an issue with keeping Richardson from going all the way into this property?
That was one of the suggestions that the planning commission had made, was trying to limit the access into the single-family residential neighborhood streets from this project. And I think as we looked at the preliminary plat for both the applicant's property as well as the multifamily tract here, we could certainly look at how we could accommodate that.
Is that something that we can get included as part of the PUD, that there is no southern access out? That all we're going on to are twenty-two forty-three and one eighty-three A? That way, we have a guarantee that nothing is going to come south into those neighborhoods?
Yes. I think the council could make that a part of the approval of the PUD. The only thing that I would maybe consider is where these folks that, in this multifamily, get out and get their access. So the planning commission's thought was trying to limit ingress into the single-family residential neighborhoods, but they were a little bit concerned about not accommodating the flow north from the multifamily into the commercial project.
Mr. Yanis, speaking of planning commission, I just want some clarification. My understanding was that they did not vote to approve this, that their vote was just to make recommendations on some stipulations we should consider. Is that correct?
That's correct. They did not take action to recommend either approval or denial. What they did was, they said that they wanted these items addressed prior to the council's final action on the PUD.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Before you leave, you know, I have a few. I'm curious as to why we're seeing this PUD without the preliminary plan, the site plan, because I can't envision, when we're talking about the noise ordinance, based on the bubble map, I would say, well, the multifamily buildings are going to block it. But I don't know that.
Right.
And then the light ordinance. And then how is the Brushy Creek Regional Trail going to, so I'm just surprised that we don't have a concept plan or preliminary.
So our zoning ordinance doesn't require that we get a concept plan and a preliminary plat as subdivision applications with the PUD. It does require that we have a conceptual site layout and land use plan. The bubble plan is the applicant's submittal for the conceptual site layout and land use plan that the composite zoning ordinance requires. That was one of the staff's reservations as well, was that we didn't have enough detail in terms of sort of the open space network, the street network, and some of those other items at the level of the current conceptual site layout and land use plan. So that was, and I believe the commission was, also had that concern. And so we are typically used to seeing a little bit more detail in those conceptual site layout and land use plans to provide some of those certainties for the future.
Not only was there no detail, but the very little detail that was there was also not necessary. I mean, they could rearrange it if they wanted to at a later time. So there was, it could not be more vague, in my opinion.
So, I'm sorry, the next question was, was any of the connection to the Brushy Creek Regional Trail addressed in the PUD?
The, it is in the PUD notes. It says that the trail corridor along Brushy Creek is required to be dedicated as would be required by our subdivision ordinance. So that is in the PUD.
So that would be going straight through the general commercial along the front edge of twenty-two forty-three?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. And the height request is on multifamily, not office. Is that correct?
It's on office and the commercial. So they're requesting for office, the hundred and twenty feet, and, get back to my notes real quick, on the ninety-five feet for hotel uses and a hundred and twenty feet for office uses. So they weren't requesting any height variances for the multifamily. The only thing that they were asking for multifamily was an increase in density, to be able to do up to sixty units per acre for structured parking projects and average of forty-five units per acre overall on the multifamily tract.
So why is it necessary for us to specify limiting the southern multifamily to three stories?
That was a request of the neighborhood in the planning commission hearing.
Okay. And then in regards to traffic on twenty-two forty-three, first, I guess I must confess, I live very close to this place. I would love it. I can't wait for it to be there. However, twenty-two forty-three is a dangerous road. So knowing that there will be significant traffic on there, what is the requirement? And is that addressed in the PUD or not?
It's not in the PUD because they didn't submit a concept plan with the PUD. It's at the concept plan stage, which is a subdivision ordinance application, that the traffic impact analysis is required to be performed. And so it would be at that point that any improvements to any intersections, really, they could be twenty-two forty-three and one eighty-three A, or it could be Crystal Falls and one eighty-three A, those improvements would be identified at the concept plan stage.
Okay. There was something else I saw in here, in the letter to Ms. Griffin in the PUD application, April tenth, on page two. It specifies, and I don't know if this letter to Ms. Griffin made it into the PUD, because we've got notes all over the place. It specifies a restaurant associated with the multifamily development is permitted as an accessory use and shall not be open to the public. I mean, that's what it says right here.
I don't think that language ultimately made it into the PUD notes, and I'd have to ask Mr. Neary to maybe help clarify what the intent of that was. But I don't believe that that's currently in the PUD notes.
Okay, because I'll have other questions for you. But let me, sure, please.
No, go ahead.
That ultimately was removed. The restaurant, I believe, that's less than seven percent of the gross area of multifamily in your ordinance is allowed by right. And the idea is just that, you know, multifamily product facing the water feature could have food and beverage service if they so chose for their residents.
Oh, okay. Like a coffee shop or something. Got it. Okay. Based on the PUD submission, does the applicant have to start commercial at any given time?
It's not written into the PUD that there's a sequence for the development, other than that the water feature has to be included in phase one.
Okay. And then I also saw the note from staff and from P and Z to update the type four site component to reduce permitted uses.
Correct.
I can't find type four site component anywhere in the PUD.
So in the PUD notes, what-
That was submitted.
Right. In the, what the applicant had requested, and I guess it was subsequent to the actual, it was subsequent to the initial application of the zoning request, that the applicant requested that the ability to include some of the type four site component. I think it was at the second review of the PUD that that came up as a request from the applicant to be able to accommodate some of the outdoor entertainment-type items around the water feature.
And so how is that addressed in the PUD?
So it's currently in the PUD notes to allow for some of those type four site component items, the outdoor entertainment venue, amusement parks, those sorts of things. That language is currently in the PUD. That raised concerns of noise and other things from the neighborhood, and the applicant has subsequently said that they were willing to reduce some of those uses from the PUD. So it would have to come out at this stage as an edit to the current PUD notes.
But in the PUD itself, you mean type, I just want to be clear, the type four site components are just listed components?
Yes, ma'am. That's right. So it says G C three A, and then it includes some of the uses out of the type four site component.
Okay.
Right.
A couple more. Let me check. Sorry, my notes are all over the place. Okay. I think that's it for me. Sorry.
My number one heartburn with this whole project is that when the applicant first brought this concept to us, there was tremendous detail, and it was great. And I was excited about it. I thought it would be a great thing for our city. But what has been presented is so disconnected from that and so vague that I feel like there's a little disingenuous about this. And so my feeling is that I would like to see this come back with tremendously more detail, so that we know exactly what we're looking at, and so that these neighbors know exactly what would be going next to them. Because to ask us to make a decision on what has been presented is just carte blanche to do what they want. So I just want to go on record for telling my side of the interpretation that I have is just lost. I can't see what they're doing.
Mr. Yanis, why would this, in other words, if our process allows this kind of vague, why can't we tighten those up? A project like this needs more specificity.
Right.
And it seems like, I'm amazed, because, I mean, I know when we took a vote on this to begin with, I'm amazed that somewhere during the process, it wasn't conveyed that, you know, we really need to see more detail before this moves on.
We did have those conversations with the applicant about having more detail. Sorry, ringing.
I know. We're getting louder.
So how do we change it to where it becomes a requirement?
I mean, I think that's really up to the council to direct us to what level of detail needs to be in all PUDs. The ordinance is flexible in terms of what all is required to be included. It sort of lists some things that can be included, but it doesn't explicitly stipulate every PUD must contain this list of items. And so I think it's just become the council's practice to have certain items that they look for in PUDs, such as architectural renderings and some of those types of items that have just sort of become the custom that we're used to. And so, and I will agree with Mr. Neary's characterization that there are differences in some of the PUDs that we've approved over time. I think we've gotten more specific lately than we were maybe four or five years ago, just to try to hammer out some of these details earlier in the process.
What is the, if we did table this, my question is, like, how long would it take? I know that they're under a deadline as far as, you know, with landowners and securing, you know, an extension on a timetable. You know, it's regrettable, but if we did table this, you know, could this be done, you know, by the second council meeting in August, for instance?
Sure. I think it's just a matter of us sitting down and just hammering out a lot of these details with the applicant and getting it to a point where we feel comfortable bringing it back to council. And I would, if the council's direction tonight is to postpone, I would ask that you give us a specified date to postpone action, just because it gives the neighborhoods notice about when it's going to come back for consideration.
I think the important thing is to ask the applicant, at what point, how much time do you need to bring us the specificity that we would like to see, so that we know what you're asking us to decide?
And I would like to note, just however, in the staff recommendations, it does state staff-
And I would like to note, just however, in the staff recommendations, it does state, staff is not comfortable that the proposed PUD provides enough detail and specificity to ensure the project is developed as envisioned. So thankfully, they were on that and they did request that.
Yeah, I would request some specificity about what you believe is missing. I think that our conceptual land use plan is consistent with what we've seen, uh, in other PUDs. As far as renderings go, every time that there was a discussion of renderings, it was relative to a request for a variance relative to architectural features, similar to the garage component. So we, you know, we're not asking for variances to type A architecture. If, if we could get some clarity on what it is you're asking for, I think we could estimate-
You haven't even solidified where you want what on the property. I mean, let's start with that.
Sure, I think that, well, as I said, we asked for flexibility. Uh, staff recommended a three hundred foot setback and we accepted that. If staff would like to work with us to redefine those setbacks, to kind of figure out exactly where the, the districts are going to go, we can work on that.
I think what we've heard from everyone that's spoken is the commercial and the entertainment retail component is what is needed. We're not super excited about, uh, more apartments. So that's what we want clarification on.
I would just like to add, 'cause I've seen several different versions of this, you and I have spoken about this. And the problem that I have with a PUD is you can change it. And so this bubble map that we got shows about, I don't know, ten, fifteen percent frontage of commercial on the water feature. That's not what all of us have seen and been excited about. That's certainly not, um-
It feels a lot like a bait and switch.
I, I don't want to go that far. I appreciate, I know it's a hard, a hard effort, but I, in order to grant you a variance of height or, um, not allowing a road connection or changing an A street so it doesn't cross over the lagoon, great, but we need to see what that is. We have no idea what that looks like.
I think that's the point. You, you get those, that information at the next phase.
Well, then we shouldn't grant the waivers now because we don't know what it looks like.
I agree.
Look, I, look, I, I know what you guys went through. I knocked on your doors of your neighborhood and I've met a lot of you and I know you guys got screwed previously. So, you know, I understand the concerns. And what makes it tough is what people said. If you can't put something at one eighty-three A in twenty-two forty-three in Leander, Texas, where can you put it? I, I know that is sort of upsetting because your neighborhood's already there. But absolutely, positively, one eighty-three A is where commercial wants to go. I mean, that was my concerns about previous projects and they are still valid concerns about those. But this project, I believe, can be a good project. And I do think that we can put safeguards in that will protect your neighborhood. We can keep the traffic from going through your neighborhood. We can restrict the height that's closest to your neighborhood of, of the multifamily. I mean, I'd love for it to be all commercial, you know? I, I mean, I would, but, you know, multifamily inside the TOD is the appropriate place in Leander for multifamily. It kind of is. But having said that, I, I believe that we can address this. We can, it may not be one hundred percent to your liking, but just remember, this land's going to sell to someone. It's going to develop and it could be all multifamily next time. So, you know, the thing that, that somebody said about crime, you know, I will tell you, I agree with you. Traditionally, multifamily does have that aspect, but that's why having an amenity like this that's associated with it will keep the rents up. So it'll keep the project nice. I, I firmly believe that an apartment complex has to have that or else you will see it decline over the years. So, you know, I'm in favor. I just want to firm it up where everybody's comfortable and all the protections we've talked about are inside the PUD. That's what I would like to see.
So to that end, are you willing to make it so there is no access to the property to the south?
So if I could describe what we envisioned, so as you know, there'd be a water feature in the central, center, multifamily on the southern edge and then coming up to the western boundary. We intend to build a road on the south side of the property to access those properties. We would be happy and think that it's a great idea for this multifamily zoning to the south of that road, to have access onto that road rather than coming into this area.
And connecting to Richardson.
Right, so we, we intend to build a, basically a ring road around the property that comes west and then north. And this property would absolutely have the ability to step into that at the city's discretion.
So I'm sorry, I have more questions for you, but for Mr. Yanis, is that something that we can even do? To say that they can connect to the property to the south, but the property to the south cannot connect south of them? Basically cutting off the access to Overlook and Le, is it Leander Station?
Leander Crossing.
Thank you, sorry.
Yes, um, I think what we can do in this PUD is just stipulate what, what they can do in terms of the setup of their streets. And then we would have to, um, as that other property comes through with its preliminary plat, deal with those connections at that stage.
So that would leave it up in the air where there's still a possibility that we have connection all the way through?
Yes, except that what we're hearing is direction from council, or we would be hearing direction from council to, to work that out as we got to the preliminary plat stage of the, of the other property. But, you know, it's, it's somewhat difficult to direct how the property to the south is developed in this PUD.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so that is something that I would prefer to see from you personally. If we have an agreement with the other landowner, whatever, I don't know what the legalities are, but I want to stop the flow of traffic that's heading south and coming through these neighborhoods, especially with both of these properties having multifamily, I think that's imperative. Um, I'm sorry, Mr. Neary. Also, I was wondering, um, the acreage breakdown. The map that I have, um, it doesn't have the acreage for each of the zoning.
Correct.
Is that something that we can get into writing and have a maximum? And we're going to say, you know, it's not going to be ninety-five percent multifamily. It's going to be only this percent.
Sure, there's a chart in the PUD that stipulates minimums and maximums for each use. This property is designated as an activity center, uh, per the Conference of Plan Amendment, which I believe, uh, stipulates approximately fifty-fifty residential, commercial is the appropriate use.
That is correct. However, that does not have to be on one individual property. So, um, that is something that the council could address in the, in the PUD itself.
Thank you. And then, um, I'm sorry, if you already addressed it earlier, there was a whole lot going on. Um, in the southwest corner, maximum height on any building that's going up there?
For the buildings that are closest to the edge, three stories.
Three stories, okay. And, um, I know there's the-
I, I would like to point out, as we move north, I believe that this western boundary affects Overlook and State more because they're not here, they're over here looking this way.
I agree.
Uh, there's a significant drop in elevation. At some point, we'd like to stop that and make it four stories. But what's appropriate, a hundred and fifty feet, two hundred feet?
Because are you able to get sixty units per acre with?
That would not be, a four-story product would be approximately thirty-seven units to the acre surface park. So, uh, sixty units to the acre would only be on a smaller site if you incorporated structured parking.
And then, um, the part in the PUD that talks about the, uh, three hundred foot buffer on the west side that, uh, you can't have commercial zoning, but it expires if the land next to you, uh-
Correct, uh, we, and I, my mistake, I left that off. We have indicated that we're willing to vacate that expiration. So, uh, you know, regardless of what happens here, we believe we're going to be developed on this edge before we know what's going there. So we're happy to leave, stipulate absolutely that general commercial won't be in this corner.
Perfect. And then lastly, I saw one of your changes earlier had to do with the outdoor speakers. Can you elaborate on that?
Sure, so, um, so, uh, what we've been talking about, the type four language, the type three site, uh, language excludes those items. We're roping them in. I, I would disagree with Mr. Yanis's assessment. That language was discussed at our initial development meeting. It was that recommendation of staff that it was included and it was in the initial submission, which I'd be happy to show you all. We have offered to clean that up. Originally, that section includes, um, you know, unshielded stadium lighting, sports events, that stuff. So we've, we had pared it down quite a bit. We've since agreed to remove amusement parks and now, um, outdoor amplified sound systems and similar, forget the exact wording, but similar facilities.
So all of the concerns earlier that residents had with the noise that was going to be produced, music, that sort of thing?
Right.
That's off the table? We're good there?
I believe so. We've tried to, you know, we've heard those concerns, we've tried to address them. One of the use, so I believe from our conversation last week, Mr. Yanis, that, uh, the type three would allow kind of outdoor background music in a mixed-use project. Of course, we're, you know, we have an interest in our residents not listening to music all day. Nobody wants to rent an apartment and have a stereo speaker outside their window. So that's not our intention. We don't plan a concert venue, just kind of compa-, uh, complimentary uses with typical restaurant, entertainment type stuff.
Okay, and you haven't asked for any sort of special use for anything outside of our noise ordinance that we already have in place?
No.
That's all I have, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Neary, I have a couple of questions too.
Sure.
Staying with the, uh, G C three A zoning, uh, one of the things that it allows is, uh, commercial fueling and washing of vehicles or I guess just, uh, washing. And would it be okay if we struck that from the G C? I don't-
I, I would say we are in discussions with a couple of users that would incorporate gas.
I guess maybe we can find a location, maybe not along the water feature, but-
Absolutely, be running on one eighty-three A.
One A three A, maybe we can, uh, figure out where, where that location would be.
I'm sorry, can you reiterate that? You said you're working with users that have gas stations?
That may have a gas component.
Okay, I-
And you're saying that would go on one eighty-three A?
Correct.
So if you look at maybe like a Rudy's or something like that, that has a barbecue restaurant with a, with a gas up front, okay? So maybe we can find a way to specify where that is on the frontage.
We would be happy to do that.
The other thing that it allows is, um, overhead doors or, you know, overhead garage doors, which I think, um, works really well in a, in a restaurant atmosphere, especially along the water feature. If you have a, uh, opened up along the water feature, but what I want to stay away from is like an auto repair shop.
Happy to exclude that.
Okay. The other thing is, we, uh, we discussed earlier, um, a couple of different things. The conceptual site plan, um, the revised one has more G C along the water feature and, uh, the single-family townhome is, um-
Yes, so the single-family townhome use is not required to be incorporated into the PUD. We added that and, you know, unfortunately, it was placed along the water feature. We're happy to stipulate that the majority of the eastern side of the water feature would be covered by general commercial use.
Thank you. And then the, um, we also talked about the water feature. I think you clarified it a little bit, um, as far as we don't want it to be a water detention pond. So it would be used for drainage. Can we include the word like chlorinated to offer some more specificity?
Uh, you know, there are different products out there that use proprietary chemical combinations to keep it clean that I don't know that chlorinated-
Filtered?
Is the right word. Filtered, I mean, I believe what we used was conditioned water appropriate for recreational use that-
I think that is it for now with my questions for you.
I have a few more.
Sure.
You know how much I love this and I want to see it. So I, I am a little concerned at the decreased size of the lagoon because two acres out in the country is just a fishing tank. So I would, I would like to see that increased. You and I discussed the exorbitant cost to do this and, um, I had said five acres and, and you explained to me how expensive it is. I would like to see no less than four acres. I, that's my opinion. I would also like to see a stipulation that fifty percent of the lagoon frontage be commercial because that's what we were all kind of dreaming about when we saw the pictures. And one of the other things you and I talked about is in your PUD under F Parkland Recreation, um, improvements that number three, a fee may be imposed in order to access the feature and that's in regards to a beach club or a kayak, et cetera. But not specifically if someone's at a restaurant that then they have to walk all the way around a fence. But because again, I can't visualize where you intend on having things.
Right.
And then number three, I think is tied to number five. And Mr. Yanis, I'm not sure how this works, but I just wanted to make a note that in my opinion, my view, if we're going to give a dollar-for-dollar credit in fee of lieu of Parkland dedication, then I'm concerned about then charging a fee for the publicly funded Parkland dedication.
And Parks Director has not agreed to that. What Mr. Neary has suggested is that we, um, not address the Parkland dedication credits in the PUD and just deal with it at the concept plan.
Yep, great. But you are-
I have a question.
Sure.
And maybe this is to Mr. Yanis, but I just wanted to sat down and then I wanted to give-
I'm getting a lot of exercise.
Good.
So if we had a stipulation that said fifty percent of the pond needs to be commercial, would that also be mixed use? Could that allow for mixed use if they did have a commercial aspect on, you know, and residential together?
Sure, I mean, I think, I, I mean, our composite zoning ordinance allows that in the general commercial zoning district to have, uh, ground floor commercial and upper story residential. So that's, that's allowed.
Would we have to be specific in the PUD or would it, that just be the way it is?
That would, I mean, we, if it's, if it's not addressed in the PUD, then it would just fall to whatever the composite zoning ordinance says and so it'd be allowed. I think what I'm hearing is that the council's concerned to make sure that the frontage of the pond has ground floor commercial uses, fifty percent of the frontage. Yeah, so we can explicitly state that in the PUD.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Sorry, oh, yeah, yeah. As far as Parkland dedication goes, you are still planning on building the trail along Brushy Creek, correct?
Uh, absolutely. Uh, there's also a trail requirement along Mason Creek. My request is that while the location of Mason Creek is pending, I don't want to build a trail that may ultimately have to be relocated. So we'd be happy to escrow the funds for that and build it at the appropriate time.
When you bring this back with much more detail, um, I think it would be very helpful for us also to know the order in which you intend to construct. So you've got letters of interest or letters of intent from some potential commercial users. And my question is, are you going to start with the water feature and then the commercial? Are you going to start with multifamily? It would be helpful for us to know how to build the expectation of what's coming.
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
You do have a letter of intent today from a movie theater-
We do.
Slash bowling alley?
Correct.
Awesome.
So let's build that first.
I want the motion to, uh, approve, uh, with a bunch of variances, uh, for second reading, all the variances that P and Z and staff, uh, have already, uh, talked about, including the fifty percent of, of the commercial being along the water feature, three stories along the southern border of the property along, as well as, uh, along the western side that, um, what'd you say, a hundred and fifty feet?
I think so.
That, that sounds right. Uh, four acres on the, uh, water feature. The G C three A would limit fueling and washing to only along one A three A. Uh, no auto repair, um, in the G C three A and, uh, I believe that's it. No road connection, uh, to the south along the, uh, single-family portion.
I'll second that.
Were you, can I ask one more question? Were you, I mean, was there anything in the P and Z items that they suggested that haven't been covered or that you didn't agree to as part of your presentation?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Cool.
I-
The list did seem longer than I recalled.
I, I would ask, is there a way, because you are asking for higher density multifamily, is there a way and is this the mechanism, is the PUD the mechanism? is there a way and is this the mechanism, is the PUD the mechanism, um, to put some sort of, uh, time schedule on you starting the commercial once you hit X number of multifamily units? So we don't end up with just a multifamily?
Sure. I think, um, you know, we could have a discussion about how you'd like to do that. Our, I can tell you that our multifamily, uh, developer who we are working with for phase one requires construction of the PUD, uh, excuse me, of the water feature and delivery prior to them opening or else we face, uh, pretty severe financial penalties on daily basis. What's that?
The PUD requires that...
Y- yes, but more concerning to me is the financial penalty for not delivering it on time.
I'm not concerned about the multifamily. I'm concerned about when you start the general, any kind of commercial.
We intend to build that as quickly as the market would allow.
So how can we put that into the PUD that makes people comfortable?
So I, I would say it would be difficult for us to commit to building speculative retail. Uh, we intend to try and lease the property and build the suit, uh, with a little bit of speculative space in those buildings as restaurants sign on.
The density of the multifamily that you're requesting, how much more dense is that than what current zoning allows?
Uh, your composite zoning ordinance caps out at twenty-five units per acre under type A architecture.
We're at thirty-eight if you have street parking, I mean, surface parking.
Correct. Uh, that, and, you know, that's a more expensive, you know, interior corridor product to build.
I have one last question, Mr. Yanis, now that you're sitting down here. So there's a motion to approve in a second. If we, uh, pass this with all the caveats, there's a second reading?
Yes, sir.
That must be conducted.
Correct.
So all this would have been worked out before second?
And if for some reason we end up needing more than two weeks, really, it's just one week between, between now and the time that the packets n- needed, what we would do is we would just postpone the second reading until the following city council meeting so we could get everything worked out.
Is there a discussion, I'm sorry, is there a discussion at that second reading or is it...
There can be, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. We'll put it, we, we tend to put those, uh, second readings where there were changes m- made on the regular agenda so you can, we can go through those changes and y'all can ask questions.
So we have a motion and a second?
Hold on. One, one, there was a lot of discussion on things to include, which I'm not super comfortable proceeding with that without seeing some renderings. Is that part of what you...
Yeah, it's part of the P N Z's.
Yeah, the P N Z and staff. They require it.
Okay. And some solidity to where things go? Yes?
Let's read what staff's recommendations are because I have them on one of these.
I think renderings were required, um, but as far as...
The staff recommendations, I'm sorry, said, "Provide additional detail on conceptual site layout, line, land use plan to provide more specificity regarding the location of land uses, primary streets, open spaces, and recreational improvements." And it says a lot more, but it does say that.
And then P N Z's were quite likely.
They were both the same. Mm-hmm. Yep.
So your motion includes that?
It includes all of staff comments, plus everything else.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Um, come to vote. Call in favor. All opposed? All right. It does pass. Five to one.
Poor Dara. Hope you had all those notes.
Thank you, Mr. Neary. Uh, I just wanted to tell you that we're excited when people want to build in Leander. And I know it's a tough process, but, you know, we appreciate, uh, people that want to invest in our community. And I also want to say to everyone here that I believe that we're going to have a product that is going to address everyone's concerns as best possible. So...
So we just want to do it right the first time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, we are going to take a break. A ten-minute recess. The time is nine forty-seven. Okay, we're going to reconvene our meeting and we're going to go to our regular agenda. Uh, number... Excuse me. We still have one more item under our public hearing, number eighteen. We're going to conduct a public hearing regarding zoning case eighteen dash C dash zero one four to amend the current zoning of interim S R, S F R dash one dash B, single-family rural to P U D planned unit development with a base zoning district of H C dash four dash C, heavy commercial on four parcels of land, approximately ten point oh six acres in size, more particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District parcels, R four five seven five six eight, R four five seven five seven zero, R five zero eight one zero four, and R five zero eight one zero three, legally described as lots one and two out of the H and M industrial park two, Leander, Williamson County, Texas. Mr. Yanis.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing and first reading of a rezoning case for the K O A campground PUD. Uh, this property was annexed in January of two thousand thirteen and it came in with interim zoning of S F R one B. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property to P U D with a base zoning district of H C four C and to allow for a, uh, K O A campground, uh, on this site. The property is already utilized for the K O A campground and they propose to expand that use to the south. Our composite zoning ordinance requires that a PUD be utilized, uh, for campgrounds. And so that is, uh, the reason for its use in this case. And the, um, H C four C is appropriate in the employment mixed-use district, which this property falls within on our future land use plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission did hold a public hearing on this last week and they unanimously recommended approval. The applicant is here and has been this whole time and I'm sure would love to talk to you about their project.
Did you all want to speak on this item?
There are not twenty speakers coming up to talk about this after you, so...
Yeah. I, um, I don't know. I forgot what I was going to say and I don't have, don't really have a presentation. But no, we've operated it, uh, for, you know, since two thousand and five and then did the K O A franchise conversion in two thousand and nine. And it hasn't really changed much over the years and we, uh, it's operated now as a nightly campground resort. So we don't really have a long-term tenant base or an application to answer your question, uh, that you had about registered sex offenders. Uh, we don't, we don't use an application because it's people coming like they would come to the Holiday Inn or something. They just register and stay how many overnight. So we don't have a limitation on that, but we, we do, uh, you know, we don't, we don't allow that if we do find out. Um, so, um, any other questions? And the only thing that we're proposing is, is using the adjoining property that, that we also own, uh, to add. Uh, we have several different plans, uh, laid out that just call for additional RV sites. And they include, um, anywhere from forty to fifty-two spaces on, on the adjoining track uh, with the possibility of, of detention, uh, as needed on there as well, depending on what they, what the engineers, uh, determine for water quality. And any other questions you have just asked?
Is now the time to ask?
Uh, we'll get to the questions in the, uh, discussion. Uh, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item? Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move to discuss and consider action on the first reading of the ordinance that I read, eighteen dash zero dash zero one four. Counsel?
I, I would like to shed some light on his comment because I don't think anyone here knows what that was about. But I had placed a call to K O A to ask because I was, courtesy of Google, looking up some, um, other areas, applications for K O A campgrounds. And one of the questions was, are you a registered sex offender or are you, are you a convicted felon? And I thought that would be a good thing to know about the K O A here in our city. So that's why I called to ask that.
I also have the same similar question. What is, what is the maximum length of time someone stays at your location?
Yeah, we, you know, everybody comes for, for different reasons. Uh, visit family, uh, purchasing a home, selling a home, uh, coming on vacation.
But your application allows for little cabins, correct?
We, we don't, we don't, uh, I'm sorry?
Doesn't your application allow for tents, RVs, or little tiny cabins?
Yes, but we, we don't, we don't have an, uh, an application. Everybody just books it online, um, or calls in for the reservation and they just stay how many overnight that they want. We have a twenty-seven night maximum reservation, but it is renewable for additional twenty-seven nights. So we, we're not a long-term RV park. We're, we're a campground resort. So most of our stays are average about, uh, four nights. And some people stay longer and some people stay less. So there's a lot of people just coming to the area for tourism.
And so what type of background check, because someone could in theory just keep renewing it and live there. Okay. So what type of, uh, background check is required?
Uh, we, we don't have any type of background check or anything like that, but it's definitely something that we could consider in the future if we had, uh, you know, on our, if we do start using an, an application. We had an application because we were taking long-term tenant on a monthly basis, uh, up until about last September. And then we've been referring the monthly business out to the monthly RV parks that are more suitable for long-term tenants. We're more suitable for people that want to come in and, and we have a lot of amenities that we, that we do. So we do like herb side valley trash every morning, um, coffee in the clubhouse, onsite, uh, activities, movies for the kids and popcorn on Fridays and just different, different events and things like that. So it's, it's not exactly, um, catering to people who are looking for, for long-term living accommodations.
How much around does it cost, I'm just curious, to either park an RV or pitch a tent, arrange a month or a day?
Yeah, a tent, a tent site is thirty-five dollars and fifty for holidays. And then the RV sites...
A, a night?
Yes, per night. And, um, and tent camping is usually limited to three or four nights at a time. And, um, oh, and then the RV sites range anywhere from, you know, they're, they're about forty-nine to fifty-nine dollars per night and a little bit higher than that for holidays and special events. And, uh, the cabins range anywhere from about, uh, fifty to, to a hundred and thirty-five, depending on the cabin.
Are any of the cabins built yet?
Uh, the cabin, there, there's been cabins there the, the whole time since we opened in two thousand and five. We added six additional cabins, I think, in two thousand and ten. And, um, we don't have any plans at this time to add additional cabins.
That's, that's a great advertisement for you.
Yeah.
Part of my, is now the time to ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. Part of my concern, big picture, is hereaway is our only east-west corridor into Leander that we own both sides of. And, and it's our front door. And I know that you're, at the H C is in compliance with the employment district. I'm just a little concerned that, you can see from the map right there, we already have a lot of heavy and really heavy industrial use going in that area. I drove by this evening before I came here because I was concerned about just the view from hereaway. You guys have done a beautiful job on your gate, your fence, your landscaping. However, if we zone at H C that is open to all of these uses, I'm wondering if that's what we want to do. I'm just asking.
Um, I'm, I'm not sure. We just had to put that, um, I don't know if you're asking me or not, but we, we don't, we don't have any... No, because we, it's, it's an expensive endeavor to add the additional spaces and continue the business. And the demand and the support's there, so it, we don't have any intentions of doing anything beyond that. But five or ten years from now, that, that could all change.
So I guess I would just then ask counsel in our discussion if we're okay with this, all of this use under heavy commercial as we're going into our downtown, our new fancy downtown district.
I think that brings up a, a point that we talked about earlier is at some point we have to have that transition from the heavy, commercial, heavy industrial use into something that's, um, not as intensive. And I guess somewhere along that, that thoroughfare, there needs to be that transition. I don't know where that is, but it's worth having that discussion. Tom, go ahead.
Help us out.
I think in this case, it, it has to be because that's what their use is.
It doesn't have to be. I think, um, the, the council could request that the base zoning districts be different. Um, you could, or you could have multiple base zoning districts. You could have general commercial for some distance along the frontage and then it transitioned to H C back. What I was going to say is we recently zoned this property for the general commercial.
Right. So we're already trying to start that transition. Can we do G C with the ex, uh, allowing them to use it for RV unless they sell it?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Could you even give a, a timeframe, like fifteen years or, you know?
For the, our, for the K O A use?
Why would you do that?
No, no.
Well, in case, um, in case they sold it to somebody who keeps the, the K O A for two years and then changes it. I don't know. I'm just trying to think of ways that you could limit it from converting to something else.
I'd say it's appropriate. I mean, you've got heavy industrial, you know, to the bottom left of it and then overall right.
It's a great use right now.
Well, I'm wondering if maybe, maybe the, maybe there's a line that kind of corresponds with the edge of this, um, heavy commercial zoning that the frontage is general commercial and the back part of the property is, could be heavy commercial. The thing about heavy commercial is it does allow for some of the uses that, um, I think w- we get a lot of requests for, uh, office warehouse that has some outdoor storage and things like that. You can do that in general commercial, but you have to have a higher site component, which we don't have a lot of land that has that. Um, so...
I guess I'm not understanding what the problem is with the proposed zoning because it seems appropriate to me.
Because under heavy commercial, you can also have a wrecker impoundment, you can have trailer and boat storage, pawn shops, a whole list of other things. We're not, I don't have a problem with the RV use. I'm just talking about planning in the future. If we allow heavy commercial here, then any one of those things could happen tomorrow. So...
But it looks like it's already bordering heavy commercial, right?
Right. Heavy industrial, actually. It's got heavy industrial on that bottom of the dark purple is heavy industrial.
Right.
And over to the right is heavy industrial.
I think it fits there. I think just at some, at some point in that node, we need to transi- transition somewhere. This is not the place to do it, but somewhere.
Well, and I think eventually the market will drive that. So I'd like to make a motion to pass as...
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Navarrete and a second by Councilmember Seiler. Uh, is there any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? No? Passes unanimously.
You got it.
All right. We're going to close the public hearing and move to our regular agenda. Number nineteen, we're going to receive a report from Antonora Architects for one oh four North Brushy Street, the Davis House. Mr. Yanis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, back in, uh, January of this year, the council, uh, authorized a contract with Antonora Architects to do an evaluation of one oh four North Brushy, which, um, until very recently was, um, my office. And, um, uh, very sad to be out of that building. Um, I miss my hardwood floors. That's about all I can say about what I miss in that building.
Is it still a historic building if you're not there?
Probably not. Probably not. Yeah. Um, anyway, um, uh, Michael Antonora and Gordon Bingham are here and they have, uh, they were onsite for several days, uh, in the spring, uh, evaluating the building, uh, doing research, uh, on its history and its significance. They did make a, a presentation to the historical commission. I believe that was in March. And, uh, and so tonight they're here to make the presentation to the council. And then there, we're not asking y'all to take any action tonight because we have this item on the retreat agenda. So we wanted to not have them have to come out to the retreat. So they're going to give their presentation tonight. And then at the retreat, we can talk in more detail about what the council wants us to do next steps. So with that, I will invite Gordon to come up and I will pull up the presentation.
Thank you. I see a lot of new faces. Welcome to you and thanks for having us in tonight.
Welcome to you and thanks for having us in tonight. Uh, my name's Gordon Bingham, I'm an associate principal at Antonora Architects. This is Michael Antonora, our principal. And, um, I am going to be as brief as I can be. And, um, I know this is not an action item, so there's no stress. Oh, that's beautiful, thank you. So, um, and we have Karen Thompson here from the Historical Preservation Committee as well. So, uh, really happy to have her support in this endeavor. Okay, so let's move in. So I just, uh, we put together a quick graph of some of the key photographs that were discovered in our investigation on a timeline, just to show the pattern of ownership, uh, what the, uh, key points of changes in the facility were over time. And, um, Karen in particular has been extremely helpful. Carolyn Bonnet and Jerry Davis, the children of Jimmy Joe Davis, uh, have been extremely helpful as well in providing family photographs, um, photographs of, from neighbors of the home as well. So we've had some tremendous support in this endeavor and, uh, have discovered quite a bit here. Uh, this is the first and most significant image. Uh, it's a Harold Stewart panorama of Leander from about nineteen-ten. It's pretty, pretty common, I think most of you have probably seen it. Um, I saw this for several weeks before I realized that we were looking right at the middle of the photo to see our, our house. Uh, we didn't know for several weeks where this photo was taken from. Once we understood where it was taken from, we could spot this, the, the house. And, uh, Jerry Davis was like, oh yeah, I've known all along, it was right there. No, I didn't know that, Jerry, thanks for telling me. Um, and what's interesting about this house is that it was a one-story house. And it was built very much like, um, the house in the bottom-left corner of that upper photo. It was just, you know, board and batten house. There weren't studs in these houses, they were just boards with, uh, strips of wood or battens that covered the gaps between them, and just the, the vertical board was the whole support for the facility. Uh, so what we're seeing is, um, you know, and it's, this is the only image we have of it as a one-story home. But we had already surmised that that was the case because the framing on the second floor is completely different from the first floor. And, uh, there's just a litany of evidence on the interior that kind of speaks to how this house came to be. Uh, this next image from nineteen-twenty-two shows it as a two-story home, very kind of quaint. It's got, uh, horizontal siding and shutters and a nice chimney there on the roof. And, uh, you know, none of that was there twelve years earlier when that first photo was taken. And this is a complete remake of that house in terms of what, how it's finished. You know, it's, it's an uppity house now, it's a nice home. Uh, it's got a lot of character to it. And, uh, you can see these turned columns on the front porch, those are no longer there. Although, uh, there are half columns engaged at the front wall of the house that are still that turned shape. So we know what they were. And then moving on to the fifties, now you can see that chimney that was on the south end of the roof is gone. And the columns are big square columns, and there's a lot of change going on here. It's got a metal roof on it, uh, it used to be wood shingle. Uh, so there were a lot of changes between nineteen-twenty-two and nineteen-fifty. Um, the gallery rail, uh, and, uh, it did just a lot of difference. And, and you can see also the shutters are gone. And here's Jimmy Joe Davis with one of his self-made fiddles. Uh, he was a, uh, very well-known fiddle maker. I think he made nineteen fiddles, uh, and performer. And he traveled all over Texas and, and the South. Uh, so these photos, courtesy of Carolyn, and she's there on the balcony at the right, uh, back in the seventies. Um, this is a great photo because that balcony rail and all the framing of that balcony was replaced in the nineties. And so this is a great document of what the original looked like. We're really happy to find that. Uh, we did have some fantastic records that Carolyn Bonnet loaned us of prior research on the, the, the passing down of this property. It was extremely detailed, and have to be honest, I had never, uh, dealt with leagues of land. Uh, it was a new measurement for me. Uh, so, and veras, another measurement of land I was unfamiliar with. So this is a very educational process for me as well. Um, so what we did, uh, in this investigation was an initial survey, just sketch elevations to identify different types of siding. And, uh, we started to see a pattern that after the fact, we color-coded. So these different colors of siding or different shapes of siding. And, uh, they start to show a very specific pattern of development. And that's when we first realized that it's highly likely that this house was its complete form as a one-story facility first, and then they added the second story, and then they added that bathroom, and then they added. And so there was this whole series of events, uh, that began to unfold. And, um, it just began to tell its own story. Uh, so we went through and, and cataloged each of these, uh, types of siding and where they occurred. And that, in combination with the photos, uh, helped us put together a conjectural phase of development for each of those phases. So this first phase, it was just a one-story building. See in the bottom-left corner, it was, um, you know, it's just two rooms and a hallway. And an outbuilding, probably a kitchen, something like that. Very common, uh, layout for eighteen-nineties. And then the second phase, this is what we see in that panorama, is where it is an L. And, um, it's got the covered porches, uh, that back house is, or the back building has been expanded forward. Also, you can see a stovepipe chimney in that panorama. Uh, that's where the chimney was in the nineteen-twenties. So, um, but then there's this huge change, a new story, a new chimney where the stovepipe was. Uh, turns out that chimney's still there, it's in the attic, uh, that was disassembled. The bricks were taken down piece by piece, and the remainder of the chimney goes from the ceiling of the second floor to the underside of the roof. And it just, it's just hanging out up there, not really doing much anymore. But, uh, at this point, it was kind of at its heyday. Shingles, new siding, fashionable siding, uppity house. And, uh, then they infilled this one-story, uh, bedroom, kind of in the, the intersection of that L back there with a flat roof. Um, there were, it was a boarding house. There, I mean, there were, the owners were there, of course, but they rented out their rooms, their spare rooms. And then in the nineties, Jerry Davis himself was involved in replacing that framing in the balcony that was failing, uh, putting a shed roof over that flat roof for the, the, the room that had been added previously because flat roofs tend to leak a lot. So there's a nice shed roof over that, that he was personally involved in. So, um, this is our most recent phase. This is just a list of the sources that we've been through. Um, and, uh, by far, the best source we've had is Karen Thompson, her expertise on this community and this county.
Can you talk a little bit about the lumberyard and some of the?
Oh, absolutely. Um, we did look into, we were hopeful that this was a Belford building, but, uh, it was not. So, uh, we went through that pretty extensively. Uh, Barnes and McCullough was the lumberyard that, um, had a place just a block away, I believe, from this house. And the, uh, manager at the time, uh, Mr. Jones, he was, uh, later became part-owner of the lumberyard here in Leander. And he was very personally involved in, um, in that period of time. There was a lien, let me back up a couple of slides, where was that? There was a mechanic's lien, uh, listed, and, and today that's a bad thing. It's like blocking your use of the property. But back then, it was essentially, um, like a loan. It was just assurance that they were, they were working on, uh, an addition. We think it was probably when they added this one-story addition. Um, but we were hopeful that Belford was kind of, and, and Dr. Stiles and his home that he was working with, uh, he had a Belford home, very, definitely components of it. So these are our sources, uh, we are at a midpoint in this investigation. Uh, we still have, uh, formal documentation, which would be 3D laser scanning of the interior and exterior of the facility, modeling it, um, creating measured drawings, a little further investigation of some of the attic spaces that we were not able to get into because of modern construction. And, uh, then actually consolidating all this into a historic structure report. All pending on your, uh, review and approval. Uh, next steps, that formal documentation, uh, this architectural style of having started out as a fairly common farm building, really, and, uh, being substantially gussied up in the twenties, and, uh, remaining to this day, also having two very different structural systems stacked on top of one another. It's caused some unique structural challenges. Uh, there's a little bit of Boeing in some of the lower walls, and maybe taking the chimney out of the attic that's not connected to anything might help with that sort of thing. But, uh, you have very few remaining contributing historic structures in your old town. So, uh, we think this is an important facility. And, uh, it's actually, uh, fantastic that the city occupied it as long as it did because when there's a leak, it got taken care of. Uh, there was always someone to work on it if it needed working on. So that's fantastic, and, uh, for your stewardship, we thank you all. Um, we'll also be looking at treatment options, uh, as described in the Secretary of the Interior Standards. Uh, restoration, not a likely treatment recommendation for this facility. Uh, there were multiple periods of significance, uh, in its lifetime, but there's not one that would lead us to say, eh, we should tear everything else out and just go to that one point in time. Um, preservation of the structure, uh, it, any structure of this age is gonna require a degree of preservation, uh, rehabilitation of the structure, and adaptively reusing it for new purposes is the most likely recommendation with some com, components of repair and preservation. Um, you could also, at your option, seek one or more historic designations. They all have strings attached. Uh, if you like owning your property and doing what you see fit with your property, uh, just be aware that, uh, there are restrictions and oversight that are, that are brought in. However, uh, if you do have a certified historic property, uh, you can then do some grant writing and seek funds to do special things, uh, from other sources, from private sources that might not be available with just a city-owned property. Um, a lot of the, uh, benefits for historic properties really don't apply to you. Uh, the federal tax credits, you, you know, it just, there's no benefit for a city-owned property to seek any sort of tax relief. So I wouldn't consider that at all, but designations might be helpful. That's all I have for you tonight. I'm sorry? Oh, absolutely, if it's privately owned, uh, and has, has some commercial use, absolutely. Yeah. Any questions or, I know some of you have never seen this before at all, so.
I don't think I can look at it again without thinking of it as an uppity house.
It is an uppity house, it's a very nice house, uh, especially from its humble beginnings. So, thank you for your time.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, it's, it's always stayed in the same location, right?
It has not been relocated, no.
It was the chamber building that was moved.
Did you catch that? I thought that was real neat in one of your photos that you actually presented. At the front of it, you can see a home off to the back, and it's where the chamber building was actually on the opposite corner and actually faced the north. And that building was picked up and brought over and sat right next to it.
Yeah, that, yeah, that was the, the Davis property that that house was moved to.
So it hasn't moved?
Okay.
Nope, nope, this one's gonna stay put. Thank you very much.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Thompson, did you want to speak on this item?
It's late, Ms. Thompson.
I'm still trying to figure out how, how, uh, people are gonna kayak on four acres. I was really writing that down, it's not possible, y'all. Um, okay, the one good thing about commercial for Leander is who is one of the biggest supporters and components of historical preservation, commercial. You go to your commercial people, and you, if we had the lumberyard, that'd be the, we'd be heading on over to the lumberyard. Listen, people, we're gonna do all this and we want you to be in on it. So I just cannot tell you how important it will be for Leander to preserve that house just where it is. We have no other two-story house downtown. We have no key home to rally around, to say that it's a key component of this town. Austin has the Capitol, so every time you look at pictures, you do this. Well, how far from the Capitol is it? Georgetown, of course, has the courthouse, how far is it from that, you know? And Round Rock has the Nelson House, and how far is it from that? Well, we've got the Davis House. And good or indifferent or bad, whether you're into historical preservation, it's got to be done. Otherwise, you've just got a bunch of whatevers. So I just look forward to working very dedicated and hard to preserve the Davis House. Whatever it's gonna take, that's what we're gonna need to do. And commercial help with adaptive reuse is just the way to go. So I go, okay, for commercial, if you wanna kayak on four acres, well, well, you know, have a good time. But be careful, because you don't have a lot of regress and so forth for your ambulance and EMS. They've closed off all the roads, so be careful when you're out there. Yes, they did a great job of writing this up. And there's no reason for us not to be a, uh, Texas historical subject marker. Not the architecture one like our Pickle Mason house up there, that's architecture of the house itself. That goes on the house, that medallion. The subject markers are out on a pole, uh, just like out by the road, and we have other subject markers. But it will be a subject marker probably to tell the whole story. It could even go for a house marker, but it'd probably be harder and we'd really have to submit a lot more stuff. But anyway, and all in all, those don't stop you from doing what you want to do. You just, if you wanna paint the house, you just don't paint it hot pink without letting THC know. So I look forward to working with all of y'all. So someday it can be a museum, it can be a visitor's center. And the reason that Champion House will never get a marker is because it's been moved. There's only one historical marker that is a house that's ever been moved, a structure that's been moved. It's against the rules to get a historical marker once it's been moved off its original site. And that's why the Champion House will never get a historical marker, because it's moved across the road. Chick, the chicken went across the road, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Well, and it is a pleasure to work with Mr. Yantis, although I call him and I, and I don't stay around for him to return the call.
We're both just too busy.
My fault, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, number twenty, discussing, consider the second reading of an ordinance for the voluntary annexation of sixty-four point three eight zero acres of land out of the Anastasia Car Survey, abstract number one twenty-two, recorded in volume twenty-five forty-two, page eight thirty-eight of the Public Records of Williamson County, Texas, setting an annexation, annexation schedule providing for open meetings and other related matters. Mr. Yannis?
So this is, if I can get to it. Where's my mat? I don't have a mat, I'm sorry. Um, so this is the second reading of the, uh, annexation for the Simpson Track. Uh, this was, um, begun back in the spring uh, as a part of the purchase of this tract and the rezoning, which was, uh, withdrawn. Um, we have to finish this annexation based on the annexation schedule. Um, tonight's the last night, basically, to, to finish it. Um, and so the applicant is, um, ready to have that done, and then they have, uh, already submitted their revised. And so, the applicant is ready to have that done, and then they have already submitted their revised zoning request, which will come to y'all in August. And so, this item and item number 22 are related to each other because the Simpson tract was subject to an annexation development agreement, because it was agriculturally exempt. And so, what we're asking in item number 22 is to amend that development agreement to allow the remainder of their property to stay in its ETJ status and just carve out this piece to be annexed. So, I've handled two items at once.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent.
Efficient.
All right. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Seiler, and a second by Councilmember Shepherd. All in favor? Passes unanimously. 21, discuss and consider the award of the construction project budget and agreement for Lakewood Park in the amount not to exceed $8,086,921.10, and authorizing the city manager to execute any non-necessary documents. Mr. Tunnings?
Thank you, Mayor, and Counsel. You know, this is one of those projects you get really excited about, you know? So, but we're looking for guidance, because this has been a two-and-a-half-year project since the voters approved the bond funding, and then we had the grant from Texas Park and Wildlife. So, this is really a really cool project moving forward. You've seen some additional information. Thanks, Tom. I appreciate that. I meant to do that when I got up here and went right into my speech. So, tonight, we have Brandon Hay with us from Half and Associates. Half has been our partner for the last two years. You know that two years ago, one of the original developers sort of abandoned the project, their project, and so, we sought another, not we, but another partner came in with Centuries Communities and is developing Crystal Springs, and so, that allowed us to access another 58 acres, bringing our total, including part of the lake, to about 115-acre park. We are, tonight, looking, we have a small PowerPoint. I'd like to go to the next slide. Quickly... Why isn't that coming up? Gotcha. Okay. So, grant improvements, we have to complete by the end of January 2019, or park improvements will complete by September of 2019 as well. This is about a year project development, and once we sign those contracts, we're looking at hopefully an opening around September of 2019. As you saw in your packet, at this moment, we have 7.28692110. As the mayor pointed out, we have that through bonds and the Parks and Wildlife grant, and then we are requesting tonight an additional $800,000 from the 2018 Parkland dedication. We did, in working with our city manager and others, we had set aside, we have those dollars in our Parkland Dedication Fund. We'd set aside a couple of other projects, but we, when we really started studying this, we felt like this was the most important, to bring that total to 808692110 to complete the entire, well, the entire park as a master plan called for. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Brandon, let him share some of the tiers and the base bid with you, so you'll have a full understanding of that.
Good evening, Counsel. There's some of you I haven't had a chance to meet yet, so, pleasure to meet you. I'm Brandon Hay with Half Associates. I'm the project manager for this fantastic project that I've been working with you for, as Mark said, the past couple of years. So, this is, in my opinion, the most exciting part. We finished our drawings, we've put out the bid, now we're ready to see it come to life. So, Mark kinda touched on some of the funding and timeline portions of it, but I'll only kinda give you a recap of where we're at and where we're going from here. As I mentioned, we've finished the drawings and we put out the bid. We had structured our bid so that we would guarantee that a buildable park would come in within budget. And to our surprise, we actually got very good bid numbers back, and therefore, we have some surplus money that we were able to move some items up from alternative items and add more into the park. I wanna kind of walk you through some different options that we structured for different kind of groupings of the park. We're calling them tiers that we like to propose building. So, first, I wanna touch on what was just in the base bid package. The base bid included, we tried to include several of the items in sort of our main hub of activity for the park, which is... We're calling this sort of our main hub of activity. It has a playground, restrooms, pavilions, splash pad, parking. We also included our, a dog park, a very large dog park, our park road, our large 17-acre great lawn area, trails, a boardwalk, and a launching pad for a kayak rental facility. It was just a couple conceptual renderings we have done for what the playground facility will look like, what the main pavilion and restroom facility will look like, kind of layout for our splash pad, and the boardwalk. So, the base bid, I kinda touched on what the items are gonna include, and the base bid total came in at about 5.8. So, as I mentioned, this left us with some extra funds that we could still look at moving some additional alternative items up into the final built project. So, then we looked at tier one. What else can we put in? One of our first goals was to try to keep moving items that were part of the original master plan up into the constructed project. So, we looked at adding in the additional pavilions. One of the key ones is down here at the lakeside, we have an actual pavilion and restroom facility for the kayak launch area, just because I think that's very critical. It's quite a distance to go to the bathroom if you're down here, all the way up to the main pavilion. We also added in some additional parking, some lighting, I think we got some games, some furnishings, all of the additional, as I mentioned, the additional pavilions, a... And, oh, a key one, I know Mark will be very happy about this, irrigation for the whole great lawn area. It's quite a massive span of lawn to have to go out and self-irrigate if you don't have that. These were just some renderings of what some of the pavilions could look like. This would be what the facility would look like for the kayak launch facility. That's the restroom over to the right. There's your kayak launch facility and also some picnic area. And then this would be like one of our typical picnic pavilions throughout the park. So, the first tier, we would add in the pavilion restroom down at the kayak launch, additional granite games, furnishings, irrigation, completing all of the additional pavilions throughout the park, additional parking spaces, and irrigation for the great lawn area. And then, this would get us to back to the original budget, about... Okay, so this would bring us back to the original budget. Then, as Mark touched on, there's the additional Parkland Dedication Funds. So, with that money, we looked at what could be a second-tier option of additional items that we could still add into the park. And these are our recommended items to help complete the required master plan items that the voters had voted for a couple of years ago. And so, this would bring in some, still some additional amenities, which would be picnic tables, trails, trash receptacles, benches, things like that. There's also a very nice picnic area right here next to the great lawn space. The skate park, which is this linear piece right here. Barrier posting cable, which is protective cabling along the roadway to make sure that people driving and parking their cars along the roadway do not damage any of the vegetation and the trees out there along the roadway, because our design is very careful to try to preserve all of, as much or as all of the vegetation out there as we possibly can. And it also helps complete the dog park by adding some loop trails and benches and furnishings within the dog park, as well as a basketball court and one of the volleyball courts. Here's a rendering of kind of how the skate park would look. It's sort of a street-style skate park. And, again, touching on the items that are recommended in our proposal tonight to fund, again, being the overlooked picnic area at the great lawn, basketball and volleyball court, skate park. I mentioned the posting cable system on the roadway, some sight lighting, and granite trails within the dog park, and well, some additional walkways that were around the park itself. So, with this tier, we have the items that were in the original master plan, and this would be a fantastic park with the completion of this tier. This does leave, however, one final tier, which would be the completion of the final park of the overall design, and that would be the full build-out. And in the full build-out, the last items that would be, we would be bringing in are, again, a couple additional amenities, benches, trash receptacles, things like that, also some landscaping, some additional lighting. There is an expanded parking lot down here that we could also add in for overflow parking, and the second volleyball court, as well as there are some pecan and walnut orchards as well. This is a rendering of kind of an overlook that we had designed as well for the great lawn, just so you get an idea of the expanse of space that this fantastic great lawn's gonna be. Imagine kite festivals, people out here playing ball, and it's gonna be a very, very popular spot with a fantastic view of the lake. And so, again, if we were to build out the entire park, the total funds would be just a little over $9 million. So, with that, that was the conclusion of stepping through the tiers that we had laid out.
Let me add addition, because just for clarification, because it's probably a question you're asking, is you saw some figures that didn't actually total. In tier, the base in tier one, we left about $380,000. We only put in, when we bid the project, we put in about a 3% contingency, and we knew that once we got to that, you know, we were a little less, it's 6.9 to 7.2, it's about $380,000. But we wanted to leave that for additional contingency. Site planning and our site preparation, site construction is, can be somewhat, you know, has some variables to it when you start putting your land, your earth movers out there and everything else. We wanna make sure we had any additional dollars there for contingency, and we did the same thing. That's why you see the 8, oh, a little over $8 million, and the figures came to 7.9. We wanted that additional $350,000 in case for contingency dollars. So, we know we're within budget, and we're just asking for your approval to move forward, and let's get started. And we'll answer any questions as well.
I have a couple of questions. So, just to be clear, which tier level are we approving?
We're asking, we're requesting for the base, tier one and tier two.
Okay. I have a couple of questions about is the kayak gonna be, area gonna be run by the city, or are we gonna lease that out to a private company?
That's a, that's a great question. We could go, we are not gonna run it ourselves. So, there's a couple of options that we've looked at and have actually talked with companies. We have a self-serve. There's a company that does self-serve, and they work with a lot of state parks. And it's a really neat operation, and that's, could be one way of going, or we would do a third-party concessionaire.
Okay.
Very similar to Brushy Creek, if you've been down there.
As far as benches for the elderly, myself included, seniors, and handicap, that seems... I love this also. I can't wait to go, but I'm thinking about bringing my parents. How, that's a long lot to get down to the water. Is there gonna be handicap parking closer to the water? Is there gonna be benches?
Yes, and I think Brandon might be able to even speak a little bit more to that. I'll, but the easy answer is yes.
Yeah, the code does require that the handicap parking is distributed. So, it's not all clustered into just one area, so it is distributed, and there's handicap parking within each of those lots. We're calling them lots like A, B, and C, and then there's benches throughout. And then also, just to continue on that point, if there is anyone who comes out with, say, a wheelchair or has accessibility challenges, certain percentages of benches also have to have, like, companion seat next to them or transfer seats. So, some of them have benches, and some of them are just a flat bed. Some, I'm sorry, some have like backs, and some have just flats you can transfer over to.
How many acres is the dog park?
I think it was three.
And how big is the lake?
The lake itself?
Four acres?
Just kidding!
All right. So, the lake itself, I would guess it's probably 75 acres or so. But to just let you know, the lighter blue area is the part of the lake that is within the city property owned. The darker blue is owned by this, or falls within the neighborhood across from the lake.
Is there gonna be some divider, floating?
Bouies?
Soies?
A wall. You know, there's, there is not. We actually asked Parks and Wildlife about a divider, but I met with Lakewood Estates Homeowners Association back in February or early March, and we had a really nice discussion, went out to their annual picnic, and we talked for about an hour. And of course, their concern was not, they wanted us to be able to use the lake. They thought that was an incredible opportunity. It was a park, but they just didn't want people accessing their property. And so, we are working on signage that'll not only be at the kayak area but throughout the park, you know, do not access, and this is private property and so forth like that, so...
What hours do we have on it?
On the park? It'll be like any other park, open dawn to dusk. Actually, it'll be open at 10 o'clock. I'm sorry.
10 a.m.?
10, 10 p.m.
Oh, 10 p.m. Okay. And where's the budget for the lawn mower?
Great question.
Just kidding!
Next year.
When there's a lawn to mow.
Well, I really am hoping that we have some contingency dollars and that we not, we're not tapping into all those and that we can work with city manager to make sure we have those things.
Very impressive job.
Can I ask a question? Why skate park versus other types of amenities? I mean, what was the thought process into a skate park, or in sense like disc golf or something?
Well, I think we also looked at our 2011 master plan, and skate parks came out pretty, pretty good in the middle. They're very popular. Ours is really, really nicely. This is a little different skate park. It's not a oval. It's not a square or rectangle where you have a lot of amenities. It's very linear in nature. It's, as Brandon says, more of a street skate, skate park. So, it's also considered as a walking path or connection path between two other paths. So, to put those amenities in there makes it really nice, and it's what skaters really enjoy. So, that's why we, we went with the skate park.
I would also say it's within walking distance of the middle school and the high school.
It is, right across the street, and we'll be surrounded by Hazelwood and Cold Springs and Crystal Springs, too. So, we feel like it'll get a lot of use.
Mr. Tunnings, at the grand opening, over here. Would you like to see the mayor break in the skate park and be the first user?
I have two questions. One, when I envisioned this, I think that the jewel of the park is the overlooked pier. And so, I'd really like to find a way to try and find that and include that into... I know it's in tier three, but to me, that's, that's the headlining piece of the entire park. Other thing that Mr. Kagan and I talked about is, can we use some tree ordinance mitigation out of that fund to help pay for the walnut and pecan orchard?
We talked about that as well, and we've got some tree mitigation, and we looked at that and thought we could, we could probably do that, yes.
Just a thought, yeah.
So... We just weren't sure of all the, I think the funds, correct me if I'm wrong, but how much funds were there? So, we were gonna look at that later as we moved into the project, probably next, later this fall and then early next year, and then try to make that happen.
But if we can find a way to continue to look at the...
The overlook, we...
Be very optimistic on the building and the funding, and maybe they'll come in under budget, and we can fund that.
That would be another nice, we, the overlook is a really cool part of the project. We were looking at recreation value for, something for everybody. Although it's a really cool aesthetic piece, and it's really neat to be able to sit there and look over that lawn like that, it may not have ranked as high as some of the other components that we felt like were needed as part of the original master plan.
Can I second now? I'll second.
Oh, great. Thank you.
That would be...
Okay. We have a first by Councilmember Navarrete, and a second by Councilmember Shepherd. All in favor? We are unanimous. Thank you very much. By Skateboard Day.
Yes, sir. And a helmet.
And a helmet. And up your insurance.
Okay. Number 22, discuss and consider an amendment to the Simpson Track Development Agreement regarding 141.1256 acres of land of the Anastasia Carr survey, abstract number 122, recorded in volume 2542, page 838 of the Public Records of Williamson County, Texas.
Motion to approve?
Second. Done.
All in favor? Passes unanimously. 23. Sustained, consider task order HAI-4.3 with Half and Associates for construction phase professional service for Rushy Street. Streetscape project in the amount of $24,950 and authorizing the city manager execute and all necessary documents.
So, Mayor and Council, see, Mr. Watts is not here. I'll pick this one up for him. As you can see, this is the project we've got going right outside the building here. And this is for additional services for Half and Associates on two phases. One were for the bid services that we had to do twice. If you recall, the first time we bid it out, it was far too high, way over budget. And so we stepped back, waited until we had the Old Town Street Festival done. And then we packaged this with Metro Drive to try to get a better, better bid, which we did. And we got savings more than enough to pay for this. And so this is for two things. It's for the additional bid services that Half provided, and also for construction management services for the construction going on outside now. And it is in the amount of $24,0950.
I was just going to recognize that Mr. Bushak is here with Half, and he's a project manager for this project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Councilmember Seiler with a second by Councilmember Shepherd. Is there any more discussion?
Just, we're very excited, doing great work. Can't wait till it's done. Thank you.
All right, all in favor? All right, it does pass unanimously. All right, we're going to receive a water use and supply update. Mr. Yomack.
Slate.
Yeah.
Good evening. This is the update for June 2018, previous month. You'll see in the executive summary that the combined storage at the end of June was 1.555 million acre feet, or 77% of combined storage. Since then, or as of today, combined storage is a little bit less at 1.495 million acre feet, which is 74% of combined storage. So it, it can, the combined storage does continue to drop. If you look at this chart, you'll see that it's, the date of the forecast that the LCR does is July 1st, this yellow line. And you can look back a year and see what the historical combined storage was back to July of 2017, and then a six-month projection forward out to January 2019. Historically, the lakes have been measured, or considered full at 2.01 million acre feet, and they're usually managed at just under that, where the green line is, 1.96 million acre feet. But as of the, as of the end of June, inflows into the lakes, and I'll, there's another chart for this, but they were 4% of the historical average at 6,000, just over 6,000, nearly 6,300 acre feet. And then you can see the forecast here. It's got four legs in, from, for wet conditions and down to extreme dry. And historically, or it looks like where it is tracking along these lower two lines right here. If you look previous, if you were to go back and look at the other ones, that's, it's certainly not wet conditions by any means. And this is the chart that shows the, the historical inflows for the lakes. You'll see the lighter blue is the, the average since 1942, 70-plus years. And then this dry period of 2008, 2015, the darker blue, significantly less than the historical average. And then the, I guess that's orange, that's 2018 through, for half of the year. And you can see the 6,275 acre feet here, and then 24,000 and change. And you can see that the inflows are, are very low. And this is the City of Leander chart. You'll see that the, the peak day for June 2018 was this 11.81 million gallons on the 28th, the Thursday. That's the blue line. And then this red line is the daily flows for June 2017. And you'll see the peak day there was 9.0, I believe that's 9.75 million gallons. Again, a Thursday, a typical residential watering day. And that, that, that 11.81 down here at the bottom, that is a new peak day. But that's, of course, subject to change in August. We tend to, dry conditions that a lot of water is produced and consumed. For the month, you'll see June 2018, 200, nearly 285 million gallons. Compare that to the previous June, that's just under 211 million gallons. And this next slide, it's a little different for the connections. You can kind of see the historical progression of connections, both single-family and total connections. But as of the end of June, 17,255 total connections and 16,278 single-family connections. And you can see these two lines, these two trend lines. There is some variation, but not a lot. It's a steady progression of, I think it was the difference between June of last year was just under 1,700 houses. And then compared to the previous month, another 139, or excuse me, not just houses, but total connections. And then 139 connections more than the previous month, May 2018. And this slide, this shows the monthly totals and the seasonal variation. You'll see that the solid lines, this orange, and then the dark and light blue are the 12-month rolling averages combined, and then one for BCR UA and one for Sandy Creek. And then the, the production for each plant and then the combined are the, are the dash lines. And you can see here where we've ramped up into the high summer months. One thing we did talk with, working with the BCR UA, that they have since increased production here to help with those peaks. It kind of flattened out there, but we've made some adjustments, and they are sending more water. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have on, on these, these charts.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Councilmember, closing statements.
Actually have none this evening. Thank you. I have none.
Councilmember Cannon?
I would like to thank all the developers, landowners, and investors around for their patience, as all of us are learning our new places. And just understand that I believe everyone here and the staff, we all want quality commercial development. And we're gonna, we're gonna find our way there as quickly as possible. So, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you all for sticking with us this late. It is officially the dog days of summer, which means two things. One, the kids are at home and they are whiny with nothing to do. And two, our Parks Department and library are working nonstop to keep them entertained. So this week, my daughter has been at art camp from the Parks Department, and she has been pleasant, at least half the day. So thank you. That is priceless. There's a couple of other things going on with the Parks Department. There are more camps, and looking ahead to when it cools down and it's not over 100 degrees, we've got fall ball. And correct me if I'm wrong, we're going up to age 16 this year?
Yes.
Awesome. So we need more people to come and sign up. At the library, Pokemon Night is all ages this Saturday. They're going to have a Rock Wall next Tuesday, and Wild Things Safari the Tuesday after. So get the kids out of the house and enjoy everything Leander has to offer. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for the way we worked through a really complex issue that, again, didn't really have a lot of specificity. So I thought it went really well, and I think it's a good project for the city. So I think that was awesome. Before we adjourn, we need to take action as deemed appropriate in the City Council's discretion regarding the executive session.
I would like to make a motion to accept staff recommendation to provide property tax reimbursements on the terms presented to us, to AEPS Corporation, contingent upon the company fulfilling the investment and employment projections that they have provided, and authorizing the city manager to complete any contracts required to complete the agreement. And to also, also thank Mr. Willis for your hard work on this.
I'll second.
Can we please clarify which executive session, that is, that we are going to accept discussion?
This is section, let's see, I'm sorry, section 551 dash, or 087, Texas Local Government Code, deliberating proposed economic development incentives for a business prospect that the governmental body seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the territory of the governmental body, and with which the governmental body is conducting economic development negotiations.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Pass unanimously. And section 551, 071, Texas Government Code, and section 1.05, Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct, to consult with legal counsel regarding BCR UA.
No action.
Action.
All right.
Second.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So be it.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 11:06.